Good evening, everyone. I'm Debbie LeBlanc Isaac, Chief of Staff for Mayor Thomas Masters. We want to thank you very much for coming out tonight to this town hall meeting to express whatever concerns that are on your mind and in your heart. We know that they, um, this is the mayor of the people and he wants to hear from the people. And because of that, that's why he's chosen to not have an exact agenda for this particular meeting because keeping his ear to the ground, there are many issues that may come to mind. And he will just ask that if you have an issue, you come to this podium and say what it is, express your concerns. And if he does not have the answers for you tonight, he will guarantee that you will have those answers in writing from the appropriate department within a week or so. So, um, without further ado, we just want to, um, ask that you silence your phones just in case because we are live and we want everyone to be courteous and, um, take your time to ask whatever questions you have and to fully express yourselves. So without further ado, please, your five-time elected mayor, Mayor Thomas Masters.
Let's give Debbie a big hand. She deserves a bigger hand than you. Debbie LeBlanc Isaac, I could not have hired, could not have asked for, uh, a better person. She's well-qualified, coming from, uh, a history of public service. I don't know who's the news leader, but she, now, but I know she came from Channel 12, so who's the news leader? Is it 12, 5, or 25? We get a little debate going among you guys. All of you are the news leaders. Let's give the media a hand. We, we love our media because the media tells our story. And, um, sometimes it's good, sometimes it's bad, sometimes it's, whatever it is, but free, freedom of the press is, and then freedom of religion, freedom of speech are three great freedoms that we have in America. And I appreciate the fact that we have these constitutional, uh, Bill of Rights, these kinds of entities and you really don't know how grateful it is to be in America until you leave the country and you travel to Europe and you travel to China and travel to Africa and other places, then you'll soon realize you're in a great country. Um, it's wonderful. It was not perfect, but it is still a great country. It's not what it used to be, it's not what it ought to be, but we're gonna hopefully and prayerfully get there one day. I thought it would be fitting for the mayor to hold a town hall meeting for a couple of reasons. One is often the public doesn't really get an opportunity to weigh in. Um, they give you two minutes, sometimes they give you three, and it takes you a minute and a half just to get going. And then when the bell rings, your time is up. I never liked the, the idea of the citizens addressing the council and we just sit there and don't say anything. I think if you ask us stuff, we should be able to answer and we shouldn't have to wait to the end of the meeting. So that's why a lot of times you see how actively I am. You say something and I want to talk about it, I'm gonna say, as the next speaker is coming, I'll call you back. But I think it's, it's time to maybe even look at that rule, um, and allow the people to address us and ask questions and we answer them. So until we get there, we're going to continue to convene these town hall meetings. I'm lifting the time restrictions tonight for you can get out whatever you have to get out. Uh, if it appears that you have forgotten that somebody else is on board waiting to speak, I'll give you a signal like, okay, wrap it up as best as you can, as quick as you can because someone else is speaking. Um, I've chosen to sit on the floor tonight rather than the mayor's seat because I really want this to be a town hall meeting. I don't need to be up there and you're down here. I need to be here with you on the floor as close as I can get so we can have the interaction. That's why I'm dressed casually tonight because this is a casual town hall meeting and I want to hear from the people. The city administrators need to hear, we all need to hear, and we want to hear from the people. Debbie said it'll be a week. If we don't have the answers tonight, uh, and I'm going to expedite that time, I'm gonna say three days. I cannot think of any question that you may have that I don't have to answer for that it takes more than three days. Uh, you're gonna get your answers, uh, within three days. Hopefully we'll be able, we have some people who are standing by tonight to answer your questions. For those of you who are viewing this live, we've set up something new. You can actually call this number and we have somebody manning the phone and they, uh, are there to, uh, answer the phone. Ask your question, they'll write it down and we will do all that we can to get your questions answered even while you're at home. I'm gonna give the area code because people are gonna be watching around the world tonight. Again, 561-845-4093. Call that number. We can only do it live, so it can only be done tonight. Um, and that's it. I'd like to make a, a couple announcements. One is on Friday, what is that, May? What is Friday? May is Friday, the 13th, really? Friday, uh, the 13th, I thought it would be fitting for us to pay tribute to a legend among us, it was among us Prince. Uh, so we're going to have right out in the, uh, courtyard Derek Mack Band. If you've never heard Derek Mack Band, you need to hear them. They're gonna come and they're going to play, if not all the songs, most of the songs that Prince performed. This is being presented by the Youth Empowerment Program of the City of Riviera Beach. You're gonna hear about what they're gonna be doing during the summer for our young people as well as being entertained, uh, by the Derek Mack Band and others. Uh, and we want to thank our co-sponsor, uh, radio station X102.3 that is helping to sponsor this and put this together. Uh, and this is gonna be Friday at 6:30, uh, to about 8:30 PM. So let's give all of the participants and the sponsors a hand. We're not, how can we forget Prince? The city, we can do better than that. Come on, City of Riviera Beach. If no one else, if everybody else forgets something, we should not. And I'm excited because I had a chance to hear the young man sing Purple Rain. And I tell you, if he doesn't sing, it sound like Prince, Prince didn't sound like Prince. So it's gonna be a great night and it's free. Everybody say "free."
Free.
That's cool, isn't it? All right, I know you like that, the band and the music. Okay, uh, you're here tonight and we want to hear from you, but before we hear from the people, there's a couple things that I think is important. The office of the mayor is so exciting because I'm sponsoring, uh, something in this city that I've always wanted to do, but, um, I've been blessed for it to fall in the lap, in my lap, in the office of the mayor. And for the first time, we have someone coming into the city and I'm going, that's doing something for the young people between the ages of six, it's not the first time anyone has come to the city and done anything for the young people, but in this manner. So I don't want to get in trouble with someone, so we're doing it, we did this, but in this manner, to have an organization sanctioned by the Palm Beach County School Board come into the city for, to serve the ages 16 to 21. And I think the chief will tell you, that's a very critical age group. Most of the young people that are caught shooting and even the victims are somewhere in that age group. So I'm gonna surprise you, I'm gonna let them come and tell you what they're gonna bring to the city of Riviera Beach. I like people to tell their own story. Give them a hand. They're gonna introduce this program for the first time.
Thank you so much. Good evening. My name is Adrienne Leonard and I serve as the student advocate for Acceleration Academy. Acceleration Academy is a new alternative school that's coming to the area of Riviera, Riviera Beach, or maybe I should just say to the West Palm Beach area. We'll have a site in Riviera Beach. On the 16th of this month, we'll open a site that's gonna be at Lake Worth and there'll also be one in Delray. We're not sure where those sites are. This school services students between the ages of 16 and 21. It is a high school diploma, it's not a GED, it's a high school diploma. And I can tell you from self-experience that there are more children out between that age bracket that want help, that want to get back in school. They want a high school diploma. And then we also have those that have, uh, the certificate of completions and they also want a high school diploma as well. So I am so grateful to the mayor for allowing us this opportunity and when we went to tell him about it and do a radio broadcast, he just took it, he owned it. And that's what we need all of our people to do because in the, in the end of the day, the final analysis is these are all of our children. They belong to us and we have to get involved. I'm not an educator, neither am I a parent, but I'm a missionary. I actually live in Chicago, but I have been going across America promoting, support, and help for these young people because they need it and we have to help them. Once we help them, that's gonna affect the changes in, not just on our block and in our communities, but across the city and it'll have an effect across America. And that's something that we need, something positive. Uh, itemized is the devil's workshop, so we need to give them something to do. This is the, you would probably know him as a principal, but he's the assistant director for the campuses that will be here in Palm Beach and his name is Mr. Jerry Daniels. And I'm gonna let him speak to you and he could tell you a little bit about his background. And I'm proud to say that there's not many places we can go and we can find somebody, a, a strong African-American man that's helping and being a good role model for our children. Anybody agree with that?
That's right.
Okay, so, uh, we're happy to have him.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you to the mayor's office. Um, let me lift this up a little bit. I'm just excited for this opportunity and to say welcome back home for me because South Florida has been my home. I left and went to school and now have the opportunity to come back and lead this, um, experience for our kids. I believe every child deserves that educational equity, no matter, regardless of where their background, where they are in education, they deserve it. And we're here to support that and help, um, help them with that. We have wraparound service, so not just academic. What do they want to do outside of the classroom to get them motivated? Because some of our kids, yes, they want to be carpenters, they want to be something else, but guess what? The high school diploma is gonna open a lot of doors for them. So we're here to serve them and the community. So we need you guys to come out. We actually have registration this Thursday, which is the 12th, and the 13th. So they can get started right now with registration this Thursday at Lake Worth site. You can actually follow us on www-accelerationacademy.org. Once again, that's www-accelerationacademy.org. Or you can actually call our number and we'll have someone answer the phone, tell you all the information you need. The area code is 561-270-5533. Let me say that once more. Once again, this diploma is gonna change the game for them, open up opportunities that they deserve. So just come out and support and watch the change happen here in Palm Beach. Thank you guys, you see me around, um, and I'm glad to be back home.
Okay. Thank you. Then from what I understand, the program was started in, um, July in Riviera Beach?
Correct.
Is correct. One is already have started and that's in Lantana or Lake Worth?
Lake Worth.
Lake Worth, okay.
You can come start in Lake Worth and then transfer over when they have a site open.
Okay, all right. And also, Debbie, make sure you have the hand mic available. Also, um, for example, if a person needs five more credits or seven more credits, whatever the credits, they can still go enroll in your program for free. Get the credits that they need to graduate and they get a actual real high school diploma like they were going to Palm Beach Lakes.
Yes, a real high school diploma. If it's just five credits away or 20 credits away, if it's just a standardized test they need to take, we have all that support to help them make sure they get that high school diploma. So they can already have graduated with a, a certificate of attendance or they can have all their credits and just need that FCAT or that FSA or intercourse exam, they can come through our doors and we have that support for them.
Okay, and also, so once, and, and this is certified, regulated through Palm Beach County School Board?
Yes, we partnered up with Palm Beach County Schools. We actually have certified teachers that either left, um, different counties to come and, um, work with our mission here, so, yes.
Okay, so once they graduate, they can take that high school diploma and go to FAMU or Bethune or Florida University, any university?
Definitely go to Bethune or any Florida university out here.
Okay. And last but not least, um, I'm going to ask an educator that I have a lot of respect for, um, Norma Duncan, who retired in, in the school district, sitting right here. Make sure you get with her before you leave because she's going to be the liaison from the mayor's office to the school. Because I can't do it all, so I gotta have help.
All right, thank you so much.
And I'm appointing her right now whether she'd like it or not, Ms. Duncan.
Voluntal. I'm definitely gonna-
You'll do that for me? For the community? Let's give Ms. Duncan a hand. Go, go to the mic.
Let me just say this. This is an example that all told, in no play basketball, they are well-educated. And I, listen, I just love you. Beautiful.
Thank you.
I knew you would like that. Thank you, okay, we're gonna move on. Thank you so much for, um, getting ready. I also see, um, Councilwoman Kusama Miller Anderson in the audience. I dare not go any further without a young lady I have a lot of respect for that continues to address concerns and issues, um, and meet them head-on in the community. So, Ms. Anderson, whenever you want to come to the mic or whenever you want to dress or whatever you want to do, you're free. In the meantime, I'm going to move on. Uh, I want to take seven people from the audience at this time. You may come in order. We just asked that you would line up here at the podium and face the audience. Whatever is on your mind, we want to hear about it. So, does anybody want to be first? Okay, Marie, you're first. Anyone else? You could just line up right over here. I am here to hear from the people. That's two, anybody else? Don't want you to come all at one time because we're recording. Okay, why don't you, uh, sit on the front, yeah, on the front row. Those people who want to speak, the first seven, just come and sit on the front row in the order that you come. Okay, uh, Ms. Marie, please, please go on.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Maria Tournegin-Pierre and I'm the Director for Valley of Love Ministries, looking at 1901 Broadway. It's a ministry, I can tell you, everybody in Revera Beach ignore Valley of Love. I don't know why, except for the mayor and few council members, okay? We're not only a homeless ministry, we help single parents, we help veterans, we help elderly, anybody that come to our door, we help them. Okay? And I can tell you, the area, few years ago, it was worse, but since we've been there, the homeless people and the less fortunate know they have a place where they can come and eat and get prayer. A lot of them are broken. A lot of people think homeless, I mean, a lot of people think people homeless by choice. No, that's not true. If you had a job, you worked and you lost your job, what happened? Your family will support you probably for a week or two. After that, that's it. Okay, so a lot of, um, homeless people are good people, nice people that had a job that's going through some, you know, some rough time. Okay? So we help with food, we help with clothes, we help with Bible study, we help pretty much with everything, but we don't get that much help from the city of Riviera Beach. Okay? It's only few people, the mayor help us, you know, he helped us a lot, a lot, um, a lot of council members help us. Judge, wanna come up, please? I might have Judge with me?
Come right on, son. Right on.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Um, bear with me, this is my first time, like, speaking in front of a lot of people like this, especially being on television and everything, so I know that I look like John the Baptist. But, um, Ms. Marie has done a great thing here in, um, in Riviera Beach and, uh, in my 40 years of living, I think that I have learned that, um, if you want to, you know, get rid of a problem, you have to pursue the problem. And that's exactly what she's doing. And I would thank you guys if you would just, you know, bear with us and have compassion. Thank you very much.
And one thing I need to say, but Channel, um, like Channel 25 supports us a lot, but for the past year, I've been trying to call Channel 25 to come down and help. For some reason, they do not want to come to the Valley of Love Ministry. And Channel 5, Charlie, he helped us a lot also. But now, right now, the ministry, um, because we only get a grade once a year and that's every November, um, through, um, through Quantum Foundation, okay? We don't get money from nowhere, okay? So the ministry right now is going through some financial difficulties. Okay, I've been calling Channel 25 every day. I called Mike, I told him I need his help, he said, "I'm gonna call you back, I'm gonna call you back." He never called me back. And I told him, the last time he was at the Valley of Love Ministry was two years ago. Okay, so I'm asking, the, okay, we helping people here in Riviera Beach, okay? I cannot do the job by myself, okay? Those young men, they're broken, they need help. Okay, they need help, they need, you know, they need to know, like, they have somewhere they can come, where, um, they can come and find help. Okay? So Valley of Love Ministry need everybody's support right now because we are two months behind the ministry, okay? And we just had a brand-new landlord, okay? He's trying to put something else at the building, okay? The last time, he came and he said, "Marie, I'm going to help you find, you know, find another building." Okay? He came every single day, came to me every single day. I pray, I said, "Lord, are you really ready for Valley of Love Ministry to move out to another building?"
So Marie, let me, let me interrupt you because I need, I want to wrap up to go to other people. Let me just ask you this. First of all, the city of Riviera Beach does not have a homeless program and hopefully one day, we, we will have a homeless program. We have council people, as you've pointed out, that we have passion and they've given money and they will continue to give money and, and grants and loans as, as they come. But, um, let me just make sure that we understand, you're two months behind the rent.
Yes, yes.
And what do you need? What with the two months?
We need, um, it's $19.50.
$1950 will take care of your rent.
No, it's, um, it's $3,000, it's $3,900 that we need right now.
Okay. And also, um, as far as I know, you're really the only homeless program, even we bring people there and people, other departments around the county, like West Palm, they bring people.
Yes, they call me.
So this is just not for Riviera Beach, it's for the homeless-
For Palm Beach County, for everybody.
So therefore, those of you who are listening, uh, if you have some, some money that you want to help or food or clothing or whatever, the address again and we're gonna-
It's 1901 Broadway, we right next to Miami Sub.
Okay.
Okay, we need volunteers, we need people, those young men are broken, they need help. Okay? For some reason, it seem like people doesn't care about homeless people, they need help.
Marie, Marie, we gotta move on now.
Okay.
You're here, you've told the story, you done beat up Channel 25.
Yes, I have to.
And hopefully, well, that's not the purpose, because they're here.
I know, but you said, "Come here and get everything out," so I have to get my guts out today.
To get them, there's not, beating them up ain't gonna, ain't gonna work either. So they're here and I'm, I'm sure that they heard what you said and they gonna do better. Okay, we're gonna move on. Let's give, uh, Ms. Marie, if you can help, please do.
I do have my card. I do have my card and I will give you my number so you can call. You can donate whatever you have, food, clothes, money. Thank you very much, have a blessed day.
Thank you. Next speaker, young lady, go right to the mic. Please state your name, just for the record, and address if you prefer, it doesn't matter, just your name.
Okay, my first name is Brittany, last name Walker.
Okay, that's good enough.
And I'm coming here to speak on behalf of my mother, Ms. Gwendolyn Oakes. She works for, um, Riviera Beach and Parks and Rec and right now they have her, um, administration, administrative leave, um, with pay. But the issue is that, um, they're saying that my mom was, um, milking the clock when they, uh, had her working spring break camp. And, um, Ms. Franks wrote her up because she had her over the baseball program and with her being over the baseball program and working morning with, uh, spring break camp, um, it allowed, it made her stay late, um, from work, so she wrote her up and recommended, um, termination. So after that, um, she also continued to antagonize her with, um, having her do a background screening, um, came up with that she was arrested in West Palm Beach back in, um, 19, 1990? And, um, she, um, she went to the, she gave, she gave her five days to come up with, um, legal documentation showing that she was, she wasn't, well, she wasn't arrested in West Palm Beach. So they had, they got their squared away, um, West Palm Beach showed that she was never arrested and, um, she came up with, "Oh, um, well, you have a felon." It's a lot of people that work for, for City of Riviera Beach with a felon. So she said that, um, she's terminating her because she has a felon, she can't work around kids with a felon. Reminder, I will be 26 in July and my mom been with the city of Riviera Beach since I was four. So that's about 22 years and she's, she's supposed to be retiring February 2017. So that's less than a year and they're, um, they're trying to fire her or force her to quit before her retirement date. And I believe that's very, you know, unfair as of, um, community. I'm, I'm a resident of Riviera Beach, I have a son that came up, you know, playing sports. I also came up playing sports with the city and it's a lot of people that, you know, play sports for the city and my mom also have a lot of people volunteering, you know, through her name with the city not even wanting to, um, fund referees for baseball. Um, people actually volunteers to, uh, referee the games for baseball because of my mom. Now, the thing is, if people boycott baseball season, will the city refund us our money for baseball season? Or how would that work? Now they have Mr. Kenny Pang out there, um, stepping in, trying to fill the game. He knows nothing about the sport at all. So you pull in, you pull the main person, main vessel out, out the city in Parks and Recreation and now it's like, it's upsetting to the city and she's been here for a very long time, like, how does that work? And how is that fair? As a mother, as a child, I don't, I don't understand.
Okay. First of all, let's commend you for being here tonight.
Thank you.
Let's give this young lady a hand. Anyone that, that comes to, to stand, to speak for their mother or father, it's, you are to be commended for coming and sharing those thoughts with us. I've seen bits and pieces on Facebook. Um, I can tell you, first of all, it's, and that's what the, that's what you're gonna hear, it's a personnel issue at this point. However, in the personnel, I don't know where we have anyone from HR, but the, one of the managers here, they can tell you what the process is. There is a process. And I will tell you, I have a lot of respect for your mother. I know the work that she has done down through the years. I appreciate what she has done and I, I will tell you that I will follow the, uh, process. Uh, Mr. Jones, would you come and explain what the process is to, what was your name again?
Brittany Walker.
Brittany, you born in July, right?
Yes.
That's when I was born, you born in the good month. And you gotta be a good person. Fellow Kinsarian Leo.
Good afternoon. Danny Jones, Deputy City Manager. Mayor, uh, as you said earlier, this is a personnel matter and because it is a private matter for those involved, I won't speak specifically about that issue. But everyone has the right and have the right for due process. And when recommendations are made, the employees have the right to a hearing and a determination will be made in the hearing and a recommendation will be made to the city manager and the city manager will then review the recommendation and the facts and render a decision. And if the employee is not totally, uh, happy or satisfied or feel that they received their due process, then there's a, two different approaches that that particular employee may then follow. One would be to, um, file for an appeal if you are a member of the union, which is for general employees, that would be the SEIU- If you are a member of the union, which is for general employees, that would be the SEIU Union, and request that an arbitrator get involved and review that case. And the second process that that employee may request would be, because they're a member of the civil service, would have the case reviewed by the Civil Service Board, and convene the Civil Service Board. So after the initial recommendations are made, there are several continuing steps in due process to make sure that the employees' rights and remedies are adhered to. And I have the HR Director here, Mr. Bruce Davis. Mr. Davis, uh, does that explain that process, or would you like to add something to that?
No, that's a very good, that's a very good process.
Yes, I'm just being very general. And, you know, often, when we say it's a personnel matter, and there are some personal details that were discussed, and it would be inappropriate to have those very detailed discussions in a public forum like this, when it's a personnel matter, the administration will take into account all of the facts that are involved. Twenty-two years of dedicated service to the city means a lot, or dedicated to any one employer would mean a lot. So any decision made as it relates to, uh, a twenty-two-year service employee would definitely be heavily considered, as, as well as any employee. But twenty-two years, you, you know, you were here with us, and with the City of Riviera Beach, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, okay, and let me just say, in, in all fairness to Ms. Franks, I cannot get involved in the middle of this, because I don't know. But I know, um, the programs and projects that I have seen, I also can appreciate some of the work that I have seen through Ms. Franks and others at the Parks and Rec Department. But, um, follow the process, and I'm gonna follow the process as well, okay? Thank you so much for coming. And, uh, if you would like to speak to the HR Director, um, he's here. Stand up again, uh, sir, for she, this young lady can see you, and you can talk to him one-on-one. Yes, sir, you're next.
Thank you, Jerry.
And your name?
Uh, hi, my name is Pete Waters. Um, I'm a new resident of Riviera Beach. I came here, um, in September of, uh, two thousand fifteen. I came as a homeless guy. I, I was homeless here in Florida for about a year. When I came to Riviera Beach, I found a home. And, uh, that comes from, uh, friends that I met here, the kindness of Christians, and some just, uh, really good things that I found here. Uh, I'm a senior citizen, I'm sixty-seven years old, gonna be sixty-eight in, uh, in a month. And, uh, I have, uh, was introduced to the Lindsay Davis Senior Citizen Community Center up, um, on Twenty-eighth Street, I think. My concern, uh, and I'm not homeless anymore, I just, I think I said that. My concern. Thank God. I was a professional, I, you know, they say, "Well, oh, you, you just want to be homeless, and you want to be on the streets." You don't want to be homeless, and you don't want to be on the streets, that's for, that's for sure. And I have been on the streets in, uh, Florida for, for pretty close to a year, and, um, am grateful for the social services that are here, that, uh, has helped me along. Now, um, at the Senior Citizen Center, I was introduced to, uh, a, a learning center, or a computer center. And there's about ten, uh, Dell computers in this area for the seniors and for students to come in. It's a great center. The only thing is that I found, and, and I do my work on a computer, because I'm a writer, I write and compose and, and do things, and communicate with people all over the, all over the world, really, I have family in, uh, the United Kingdom. The thing that I found is that the computers are in such terrible, terrible condition, and it is because nobody is maintaining them, and the kids have free rein on it. Now, there's nothing wrong with kids playing computer games, except when they're not supervised, when they're not supervised, they're gonna break the computers. So you got ten computers, maybe fifty thousand dollars worth of computers sitting there, and kids come in after two o'clock in the afternoon, and nobody's guiding them or helping them, and they're, they're doing what is normal to do. You play with the computers, and you do what's fun. And they do what's fun, but what they do is they wreck the computers. Now, so when the adults go in and they want to do their work on the internet and everything, you've got all kinds of garbage, and viruses, and spyware, and all kinds of things have been let in, because the kids don't know that they're damaging these computers by just playing with them. Uh, it's the same thing as if, if you have a brand-new car, and you give the kid the keys, say, "All you gotta do is turn the keys, and the car will take off, just hit the gas, and it'll go." Yeah, that's true, except you're gonna break the car in no time, if you don't know about the maintenance.
Let me not interrupt you, but I need you to kind of get to where you're going.
Okay, the thing, the thing is, I, I'm, I'm praying for is that we can get somebody to understand that these are great educational materials for the kids, and the kids should learn how to use these computers, and not just wreck them. And it's not, I'm not against the kids using the computers for, for games or anything like that, but you got the same thing in the library over here, you got computers that are breaking down, and there's no maintenance, and people are just running roughshod over them. So my, my hope and prayer is that somebody will come along and either be a maintenance person, a teacher, and somebody can teach the young people and the senior citizens the value of these tools, which are these computers, which are right now going to waste. Anyhow, I want to thank you very much, uh, God bless you.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for coming. And, and let me just say this, um, you, you can be seated, let me just say this, the computers that you're talking about, I want to be clear, they're the ones at the, the Lindsay Davis Center and the library.
Yeah, at the Lindsay Davis Center and the library, they, they're, they need maintenance also, and that was one of the reasons.
Okay, I got it. So what, what I will do is look into it, and, uh, there may be that they may be purchasing some new computers, I don't know, but I'll speak to the, uh, people that I need to speak to, and, uh, I, I, no, I, no, I appreciate what you said.
Well, somebody will go along with the computers and be there for the kids, so that he can learn how to use them properly.
Okay. Well, you make a good point, I appreciate what you said, I'll look into it, and our staff will get back with you within three days, and hopefully, we'll find some good computers that are not broken down. And if we got some broken, we'll fix them, and we'll do the thing with the children, just to make sure that, because we don't want to be spending money, spending money, spending, we want to fix them. Give this young man a hand for coming and sharing, that's how we get information. Mrs. Duncan.
Okay, uh, how much time did you see I have?
For you? Oh, an hour, no, I'm just kidding. Take a few minutes.
I have so much to say, uh...
Well, let's go for five, at least.
Okay, I'm, I'm not gonna stay up here long, I was just joking with him, but I, I'm serious. I am concerned, my biggest concern is stabilizing this city. How do we stabilize this city? The sitting, sitting board for the CRA, the city borrowed thirty million dollars for the marina, and I don't have a problem with that. But what about the other communities in the city? Are they stabilized? Yeah, there are so many places that people have maintained their properties, and then you have a house that someone lost, and they had no choice. They lost their home, they moved out, so here's a vacant house here. And, and I, I know you don't have the answers today.
Where did he?
Okay, because I, I don't want you to miss this.
I see you.
Okay, I, I don't want you to miss this, and I definitely don't have all the answers. But I think we need to get together, your next meeting, where we have people come in here, and let's sit down and come up with an idea of how we, how can we stabilize this city? Number one, let me say this, and I'm not attacking anybody, but if you're gonna have your city move up to the level that it should be, management is so important. And right now, we do not have the proper management of this city. Now, you suspended the city manager, but when you bring her back, does that change anything?
No.
You know, and it's, and I, and I'm not, listen, I'm not attacking anybody, I'm not getting personal, but I'm saying, citizens, we have to stand up and decide that we are, we deserve better than this. We have been here, I don't know about you, but I've been here all of my adult life, and I just think we can do better than what we're doing. Now, and I'm not just talking about the city manager, I'm, I'm talking about the entire management staff. When I hear the city attorney telling the council members, "I have to research that, I don't know about that." And people, they, they ask questions, and it goes on and on and on. And then the city attorney tells the people, I think she told you, "You had the wrong information in terms of the city charter." That is disgraceful. That is disgraceful. And if you are operating with people like that, you cannot move forward. I have a suggestion, though, that the city council and the mayor, you should have, hire somebody who could be your person to be on top of anything that's going on in this city, that they report directly to you, and that you jump on, on anything that comes up in terms of stabilizing this city. Now, let me move on to the next thing, because I, I know my time is up. I drive around the city. Our state roads that have been taken care of, or paved, our county roads, none of them are done the way that they're done in other cities. I'm gonna start with US one. If you haven't noticed before, and I have to drive US one and Silver Beach Road every day. You, they paved the road, you have decorative lights on one side. Now, tell, I want you to go to any other city, and the state has paved the road, and you have all these old wooden posts that are about to fall down, you have wires coming back and forth across the road. Do you see that anywhere else in any other city on US one? You know, it, it, and it really took effect on me, I was driving up to Martin County, and I just decided, I'm not rushing on ninety-five, I'm gonna just go up US one. And once you pass Silver Beach Road, every step of the way to Martin County, you had nice lights on both sides, you had sidewalks, you had, I mean, it was beautiful, it was a beautiful drive. Get on Silver Beach Road, and that's the county road, we have a county representative, right? They paved that road recently, that last part, and the posts is between two boards, holding it up, no sidewalks, the, I mean, it is disgraceful. And that's a county road, and we, we do have county representation, which our city is supposed to demand those things that we're supposed to have. And I'm saying, wait a minute, there's something wrong with this, and, and, and I, I'm upset about it, I, I don't, I don't know about anybody else. But my, my whole thing is that I aim for the best. And if you give other people the best on the state, from the state representative and our county representative, I don't see why we can't have it here. So I'm saying, I don't know how we attack this situation, but it needs to be taken care of. And US one, in our city, is the only one that you have to do U-turns to get to businesses. And I'm just waiting for a terrible accident to happen, because someone is going to be in the process of a U-turn, and someone is gonna be flying in, you know, and just, just smash them up. Maybe nobody else has noticed these things, but when I look at this, and I'm saying, wait a minute, there's something wrong with this picture. So I'm saying, citizens, we have to do more than just complain. We have to get together, and our, our representatives on the state level, on the county level, we have to have them understand that you give us the same services that you give other people. Oh, I forgot, one part of Silver Beach Road is not paved.
And then we're gonna have to wrap up.
Yeah, I'm, okay, I told you, I'm, I'm, okay. That one part that's not paved is that part where you go across the railroad track, uh, from Old Dixie. And the last thing, Mayor, let me just say this, and I'm not attacking you, you named Old Dixie after my president. What I want you to do is to tell the port, when we invite him to go down that road, we don't want him looking at that mess over there. So we want them to do whatever they have to do, build a wall up, uh, do a Trump, build a wall up to the sky.
We ain't gonna do a Trump.
So that, so that, so that we don't have to look, that he would not have to look at that junk over there. I appreciate you, Mayor.
I appreciate you. Come on, let's give Ms. Duncan, we'll come, we're gonna come back. Okay, and, uh, we're gonna move on, and we're gonna hear your comments, and then we're gonna hear from the water people, because I know that a lot of you wanted to hear that. Uh, let me come to Ms. Bram, because I know she has to go, but go right ahead.
I, I have two issues. Um, the first one was about the Parks and Recreation.
We're here to hear you.
Okay. Um, I don't know who's over the Parks and Recreation, but we live in Riviera, and every time we sign up, it's been so crazy, they don't have the, um, dates, they don't, Ms. Gwyn made a schedule, Kenny Payne came, and, um, it's changed everything, and it's just a mess. It's like we giving our money away, we want to support the city, but every time we sign up, it's, um, we don't, nobody knows when it's gonna start, know nothing.
Taking notes of this.
Your name?
Janice Williamson.
Make sure you give her funding before you leave, that'll, that'll...
Okay.
So we can follow through, but go ahead.
Right, and then, a lot of people, the sign up is crazy, the starting is crazy, when, like, this year, they only had T-ball, because people don't want to spend their money, it's so unorganized, and I like, we played basketball, and it was so, we didn't have a coach, we didn't have nothing, it was just crazy, and I want to know who's over, all, all over the Parks and Recreation. Ms. Gwyn did her job, but it's, everything else was just crazy. And another thing, I need to know information on who helps the seniors in Riviera with, like, painting their house and stuff like that. Instead of the city coming, giving fines, they should, um, have somebody to help them, you know what I'm saying? My mom has been fined for two years in a row for no grass, no, my mom's blind, she's eighty-three years old and blind, can't even see the grass, but they keep putting the fine on her door. And I've been down to the code enforcer and everything, I just need to know, does this city have someone that can help her? Because like West Palm, they have people to help do doors and stuff like that, my mom would need all of that, but she can't afford it, she's on a fixed income.
Make sure that we have your email address, I'm concerned...
It's on the paper.
I'm very concerned about our seniors and our young people.
Okay.
I can't, I don't know if we have any programs per se, as far as grass and those other kind of needs that our seniors, but I can tell you, I will partner with you to make sure that we address...
Appreciate that.
And try to get those things done for your mom.
Okay.
Give this young lady a hand, Ms. Bram. That's a problem, that's a problem. I agree with you. Okay, I don't know, but I agree with you.
Somebody here it is.
I agree. Ms. Bram?
Good evening, Ms. Bram.
And then we're gonna hear from the water people.
Good evening, Mayor Bram, Riviera Beach resident. My main concern here to this evening is the crucial element, and that's about the water. As you can see, other things has been scut, has been discussed here, but if our water supply is not cleaned up, everything that we do in this city will be in vain. So my issue here is the water. As you can see, the manager, Ms. Jones, is not here, but we have a collaborative people, the police department, the fire department, thanks to our mayor, from the lower employees to the top-scale employees, you can see that the city will go on. And you can see that it, it will be problems that will constantly exist. But my thing is about the water. Your thing should be about the water also. Now, I've been in these meetings here, and I've heard them talk about Grimace Park, that the area in Grimace Park, I have this binder, and I dissected, and I read through it. I have this binder and I dissected and I read through it. Plus on top, Ms. Bram had called them out in twenty-fourteen, October the third of twenty-fourteen, because see, I knew about this problem from eleven, ten, goes back. And Mayor Previs Maccabrow, he knew about it too, as well as we owe the residents. So Ms. Bram did her part, because she gave it to the manager as well as the water department and encouraged them to stay on target here with the water supply in Rivera Beach. The reason that I'm upset, because I keep hearing them talk about Grimacy Park. See, you all don't have this binder here. Now, back in twenty-fourteen, it's public record, twelve oh one, West Sixth Street. That's over on this side here. So residents, wake up here, wake up here. So if they're cleaning this up now, it should have been cleaned up, you as residents have to stay on guard. Ms. Bram cannot do everything, but it's up to you to do your part, because this, this water is a critical thing here in this city here. I received this letter here on the sixth here. This memo from the utility district, and I'm kinda appalled. I'm appalled by because of, this is not an emergency. Yes, it is. This date's back here. Don't, don't, don't do that to us. Don't do it, don't do it to Ms. Bram. And don't do it to the residents here at Rivera Beach. Admit the mistakes, fix the problem, and let's correct this. Stop horseplaying with this. Peoples with CF cystic fibrosis, their system is completely shut down with any bacteria. Mucus builds up in there and they shut down. Some of them die, because I know some that, that have. So, 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 so don't play us like this. Please don't do that. I'm appalled by this letter here. Go back and correct this. And when you says here, during the month of April, the utility district was informed, this goes back, this goes back. But we're just getting these letters here. I don't know, raise your hands in the audience, how many you peoples that own your homes got these letters here? How many? How many? It's shameful. Everybody in the city needs to receive this. Everybody in the city needs to receive it. I'm appalled by this. It's, it's, it is potential, no health threat. No health threat. My husband is sick, he's very sick. When I said I do not drink your water, no, I do not drink your water for these same games that you play here. These same games, these are games being played on people's lives. Clean up this place. If you told the Palm Beachers that they had bacteria in their water, all of you all will be out of here. We do not expect to be treated in a difference. It doesn't matter to Ms. Bram about how much income you receive, because the status quo does not go, deviates, that we're human beings. And we have babies, children, the elderly, and this is what our community is comprised of. So, 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 don't do this to us.
Bram, you gotta wrap it up. I'm finna bring him on right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's give Ms. Bram a hand. At what appropriate time to go right to the water, uh, people. Uh, Mr. Jones, if you would come and present those who are gonna tell us about the, uh, the water situation and what we are doing and, and give us an update and call the ones up that will address the people of Rivera Beach. And while you're doing it, I need a volunteer to just come to the table. Is any volunteer, I want you to do something for me while he's coming.
Danny Jones, deputy city manager. First of all, I'd like to apologize on behalf of the administration and city employees for any, any issue that we may have caused by not publishing those notices early on. But let me assure you, the residents of Rivera Beach, our business community and our citizens, that safety is our first concern. Nothing takes precedence over protecting the health and well-being of our residents. And I think moving forward, Ms. Bram, the city is doing everything possible to reassure the citizens of Rivera Beach that the water has been and will continue to be safe to drink in Rivera Beach. The letter that Ms. Bram was referring to was standard language approved by the Palm Beach County Health Department. And they approved that letter and it's a requirement, when certain situations occur, that we make the public aware and provide that notice. So that's, that, that notice is standard language, Ms. Bram, and those are factual things that are in the letter. But the city is taking every precaution and making all the necessary changes to provide a high, higher quality of service in our water for the city of Rivera Beach. Initially, when this incident occurred and was brought to light, the city brought in an outside vendor, separate from any city employee or staff member, to test all of those sampling points, the water at all those different sampling points. And we will continue to have that outside company randomly sample, in addition to what's required by the Health Department and the new daily standard that we do here in the city of Rivera Beach now. Most of you know by now, there was a change in leadership at the utility district. And I'll discuss that a little bit further as I move down my list of, of things that we've done. We've improved our communication with the Palm Beach County Health Department. We've opened up a, a bigger and broader lines of communication with different steps involved for them, uh, to notify and the different notification protocols and procedures that we'd like for them to implement as it relates to the city of Rivera Beach. And we're in discussions and, and we will be bringing, we, meaning the city administration, will be bringing to the utility district board members, the suggestion of creating a utility district oversight committee made up of residents and experts to assist in the water utility development and the safety of the water in the city of Rivera Beach. And finally, the city procured an independent consultant with over forty-nine years of experience in water and wastewater treatment to work on a day-to-day basis with city staff and employees on the operation of the city water and wastewater treatment plant. And I'd like to bring that individual up now. His name is Mr. Bevin Bowday. Again, he's been with, or involved with water and wastewater utilities for over forty-nine years, Mr. Bowday. Can you give us an update on your assessment over the last week or so that you've been involved and some of the measures that the city is currently taking or in the process of taking to provide a higher quality of service to our citizens?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Jones. Uh, my name's Bevin Bowday. I retired about a year and a half ago from Palm Beach County. I was director of utilities for Palm Beach County for twenty-five years. And, uh, I do have, uh, all of my career has been spent with utilities, water treatment is my actual technical specialty. I started work last week. Giles Rhodes is the, uh, uh, in charge of the utility department at the present time under the direction of, uh, Troy Perry, who is also giving us administrative help. And, uh, I can tell you that we have started an intensive program to test the water. Uh, we've been doing this now for three weeks. We have forty sampling points around the city, including Gramercy Park and others out west, but also out in the eastern part of the, uh, city. And we have been testing those every day for chlorine residual. And, uh, and if we, we have not had one excursion of the rules, every test in the last three weeks has been, uh, within acceptable limits.
Hold on one second, forty, and I'm gonna, I'm probably gonna interrupt you.
Yes, sir.
Forty?
Forty testing points.
That's the entire city from east, west?
Entire city. Yes, sir.
Okay. And these testing, when you get the samples, what do you do? What do you take them?
Okay, when we get the samples now, we have a new communication protocol that we have established, uh, with Mr. Jones and, uh, Mr. Perry. And, uh, what we do is, uh, when the samples are clean, we let them know if we have, we have not had a problem. But if we have a problem, they will be immediately notified along with the Health Department. So that the, uh, city administration will know and can, uh, let, we can let people individually know, uh, which we will do, because we are going to make sure, if we do have low chlorine residual, that we flush and take any other precautions that we need to do. Now, what else are we doing?
What, excuse me, what do you mean by flush? Explain that. I want you to talk to me and to the audience, like we're in the third grade.
One of the, the, the problems with chlorine residual, which you need to keep the water safe, is that there are some areas, like Gramercy Park is a perfect example, it's very far out from the water plant and it doesn't have a lot of demand. There's not a lot of water being used there, especially, uh, now that it's off-season. So what we have to do is we have to move the water to Gramercy Park through those pipes to keep the chlorine residual up. And we are developing a program under the aegis, under the eyes of the Health Department. Uh, I'm looking at it very closely myself with my experience. I could tell you, uh, Mr. Rhodes, uh, knows exactly, uh, what he's doing in this issue. And, um, we are moving that water along by what we call flushing. So if we need to, and so far, I, as I said, for three weeks now, minus one weekend, but three weeks, now we're doing it seven days a week. First week, we did it five. Now we're doing it seven days a week and we're gonna continue to do that for over a month, while we develop a permanent program to help move that water through the pipes. The other thing, you know, that we're doing is we're looking at our operational procedures. We're looking at ways to keep the water as fresh as possible and to keep as much chlor- chlorine in that water, uh, everywhere in the city. So there's a number of operational procedures that we are working on, uh, that will do that. We're turning over the water in our tanks more often. Now, those, we draw the tanks down that you see around the city and we fill them up again at night to keep the water fresh. We're doing that. We're also, uh, getting ready to purchase, uh, digital analyzers that analyze ammonia in the water, and we're gonna use that at the water plant to make sure that the chemistry is exactly right. And we're looking at long-term programs to automate that, uh, so that the operators will know on an instantaneous basis exactly what their chemistry is. We're looking at, uh, we have a hydraulic model. That's a, a model that, you know, models the water flow and the pressures and the whole system. Uh, we're meeting with our engineers that developed that and get their, uh, ideas on, again, how we can move the water, uh, through the pipes more often to help, uh, clean that water problem up. We're looking at long-term, uh, solutions to the plant. Uh, we have just started that. Uh, that's gonna take a little more time to do. Again, we're working with the Health Department on that, we're working with our engineers. Um, I think we've got the word to our staff. Um, and we have promised Mr. Jones complete transparency. If there's any issues whatsoever, he will know immediately. He will know right away, because we, uh, are not gonna repeat the failures of the past. And, um, the other, the other thing that, uh, as I mentioned, we're looking at some changes, permanent changes to the plant that will help improve, again, the exact chemistry that we want. And, um, that's gonna take a little time, but we are working on that.
Let me ask you this question.
Yes, sir.
And it's, it's been a question that some people have danced around, but I need a direct answer from you. You're familiar with the Flint situation?
Yes, sir.
What happened in Flint? I want you to tell me how is Rivera Beach situation right now different from Flint?
Okay. And I can tell you that the situation is completely different.
Explain that to the people.
All right. Flint, Michigan has a problem with lead in the water. Lead is a poisonous material that gets into the bloodstream, particularly of children and older people, and is very, very dangerous. And we do not have a problem with lead in this city. Our problem has to do with chlorine residual. And you wanna keep chlorine to keep bacteria out of the pipes. And we have had some instances of bacteria in the pipes in the past. If we can keep the chlorine residual up, which is our goal and our plan, we will not have bacteria. The kind of bacteria that we found is not bacteria that makes people sick. It's an indicator bacteria. It's called total coliform. The kind of bacteria that make people sick is Esterica coli, E. coli. That's the kind of bacteria that make people sick. Or fecal coliform, coliform that comes from fecal matter. We did not have fecal hits, we did not have E. coli hits during the entire period. We had some total coliform hits, which is an indicator of issues. So we did not have water that would make people sick, and certainly not as sick as Flint, Michigan. Flint, Michigan is a tragedy, a complete and total tragedy. What we had in Rivera Beach is nothing like that. It's a problem that we're dealing with, we're gonna correct, but it is not anything like Flint, Michigan.
I'm fine. I just wanted you to explain the difference, make sure that people understand that we are not Flint, Michigan, we're nowhere close to Flint, Michigan. I'm gonna say this, uh, sometimes people say, well, Bishop, don't talk about the Lord, don't mention this and that, you're the mayor, but I just have to believe that there was an angel of protection over this city. Because if we had not moved as fast as we did, if, if the media had not brought it out as, like they did, it could have, um, developed into a worsened situation, not Flint, because we don't have land. But whatever it is, I'm, I'm thankful. I am thankful that, and I believe that there's an angel somewhere around Rivera Beach, that you're here as a consultant and whatever they didn't do, that it's gonna happen now and we're gonna be way ahead of the game. We're not gonna be reactive, but we're gonna be proactive.
Absolutely, sir.
I appreciate that. Is anything else you wanna add?
Uh, that's all I have, but if people have questions.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Jones, can we, uh, while the consultant is up, there are people in the audience that like to ask questions, can we get the mic? Debbie? Okay, now this is a time, audience, if you have questions about the, uh, anything that you wanna know about the water, ask the question now, because we want answers and he's here. He's hired by the city to be our consultant and to give you answers. And I need a glass, I'm gonna drink this water, because you're telling me it's safe.
Perfectly safe, Mr. Brown.
All right, well, I've got the water and I'm gonna drink it as long as you guys keep.
Would you like me to have a drink myself?
Yeah, I do. I want you to get a drink too. We're gonna drink it together. Well, I drank out of this one. Get him another glass, he gonna drink the water right here on TV.
I will drink the water.
Debbie, I'm serious.
Get me a glass.
He can't tell us it's safe and he ain't willing to drink it.
I will drink it.
If the consultant drink it, the mayor drinks it, I'm gonna be all right. Go right ahead, ask your question.
Uh, real quick, Bishop, uh, is there an outside, outside contractor that we could hire to, uh, oversee the progress of the water situation? Because how can we trust the same people that neglected to tell us, you know what I'm saying, to fix the problem?
It's a good question. Ms. Jones, you wanna answer that?
Well, first of all, I am an independent consultant. So I report directly to Mr. Jones and Mr. Perry. I do not report to the utility district, uh, staff, I report to them. And, uh, I can assure you, I'm a registered engineer. I've spent all my life working for the health and safety of people like you, customers of water systems, and, uh, that is what I will continue to do. And if I feel like there's, uh, uh, some lack of cooperation or, or if there are some resources needed, I'm gonna speak up. I'm gonna speak my mind. We also are gonna bring in a team of three people that the Health Department is gonna, uh, also agree on, that is gonna come in and look at the water plant, and look at our operation, and look at the equipment, to give us their opinion of what, an independent, another independent opinion, of what, uh, is needed to be done for the near term and the long term.
But I think his question, I, I think he's asking about the people who are here now, who are working in the water department. He's asking, how can we trust them? I know you're the consultant, you're gonna be on top of it, but Mr. Jones, what about those who are working in the water department? What's gonna be different? What, what have we done? Mechanisms, are we meeting every day or what? Tell us whatever you think is important.
Yeah, Mr. Bowday.
Please, please address that. Very good question, young man. Since you have the mic, I'm gonna need- Very good question, young man. Since you have the mic, I'm going to need you to take the mic around to whoever.
Yes, we have, we have Mr., we have the consultant here, Mr. Boday, here, working with local staff, meeting with staff members. I can't say daily, but he's giving direction and instruction multiple times a week and he's inspecting and going through the process of reviewing all the operational plans, policies, procedures, and oversight. And the day-to-day operation from the City Manager's Office overseeing those day-to-day operations with Mr. Troy Perry is temporarily assigned to be the liaison from the City Manager's Office to ensure that those directives or those recommendations by the consultant are implemented from the City Manager's Office and we have oversight over what happens on the day-to-day operation of the Utility District.
Okay, let's drink the water, sir. Consultant, no, no, no. Let's drink the water. It's right here. We're going to drink it publicly for everybody. Okay, next question.
While you're drinking the water, that's a very nice gesture. But when I read the letter, it strictly said that the children and the elderly, you made sure you addressed those as to not, to be careful about drinking the water. But now all of a sudden, you're telling us that it is, okay, let me say this. I understand bacteria very well. My daughter's an environmentalist. Here it is, and I also have somebody who is an engineer too, who actually wrote me on, wrote me and inboxed me about the water here in Riviera Beach. You're concerned. I'm still concerned. Okay, I don't drink it. My dog doesn't drink it. And nobody in my house is going to drink it, simply because we need another update. Okay, when you talk about flushing, how does flushing these pipes affect us? What happens when they're flushed? Flushed with what? I, I know that you are capable of doing the job. Anyone who's done that job as well as you have in West Palm Beach, because I used to live in West Palm Beach. That's where I was born and raised. But now I'm here.
Palm Beach County is where I work.
Okay, Palm Beach County, okay, Palm Beach County. You did a very good job in West Palm Beach because they don't have this problem. My concern is if it had not have been opened up through media, would we have ever known about this problem? And then I'm hearing about long-term. I understand short-term plans and I understand long-term plans, but what is happening now? Right now, today, we got the letter. I didn't like it. I'm an educator. It was a bunch of bum-fumly. It was a bunch of general information, which I want specifics now. I don't want to hear general anymore. We need some specific answers. And to me, things are not being specifically addressed as to the flushing because the flushing was never defined as far as I'm concerned. So would you please go back to the word flushing the pipes and what it would do for us? See, my water bill went up. Now, I'm going to tell you why. I'm not happy. And my water bill went up for water I can't drink. And then all of a sudden, I'm getting a water bill from Orlando. You had nothing to do with this. But as, as citizen, I'm telling you my concern. And then there was a $12,000 increase in salaries. So I'm having a problem with all of this. Things have to make sense to me. And right now, nothing is making sense. It's that confetti.
One of my tasks. Yes, ma'am, and I think you, you're very correct. One of my tasks.
Hold on, let, let him answer. Go ahead. Answer the question.
One of my tasks is to improve transparency of what we're doing at the Utility District to all of you citizens. Now, I can't do that overnight. We're going to use the web and we're going to put our data on the web. We're going to put our plans on the web, where I'm sure we'll be producing brochures. We'll be doing other things to let you know what we are doing. I will be the first one to tell you that, looking at the past, you did not have that kind of information. You deserve that kind of information. You will get that kind of information.
Okay, do we have anyone else from, I know you have the mic. Hold on. Mr. Jones, was there anyone else from the Water that was going to speak or we just need to hear from the consultant?
Okay, Mr. Boday provided us with an accurate update. If we have a reasonable question where he's not able to answer, then we'll have other questions.
Okay, I think there's a, how many people, raise your hand if you have a question for the Water. And I'm going to ask everyone to keep your questions right to the point for we, because there are other issues that we want to make sure people have an opportunity. The code enforcement person is here. The police chief is here. If you have any issues with the Police Department, you have any questions, the head of the department is here tonight. And, and you have a right to ask your questions. And I've asked him to be here and he's here. So can't get any better than that. So let's deal with any more questions, but keep it right to the point, please. Make sure that mic's on. I don't, I don't hear it. Tell Walter. Walter, we need to make sure the mic is on. That it's recording. Mr. Jones, make sure the mic. I don't think we got a problem with the mic. We need to make sure it's recording.
Before you can answer a question, Mr. Boday, let me answer one question about the bills going to Orlando. The bills going to Orlando is just like a credit card company sending a credit card payment to a processing system. The city, for efficiency reasons, moved to a lockbox system. It's a more efficient way of processing checks. When you receive four or 500 checks every week from all the businesses, we tried to encourage more efficiency in the system and turn it around when your checks are deposited. So we went to a lockbox system with an address in Orlando. Basically, it's a check processing center. The batch of information is, as far as the bills are concerned, is sent to them electronically and the bills are mailed out automated through an automated process. So the lockbox system is just in a more efficient way for the city to process check payments. Okay?
Do you, Mr. Jones, are you saying that that's, that's the best we could do? As far as farming that out?
No, we did not farm it out. We did not lay off any employees. We just tried to provide a greater level of customer service rather than having two or three people in the city processing checks every day, five days a week, eight hours a day. We tried to make better use of that staff time to provide a greater level of customer service. When you call the city now, there's a customer service help desk. And when you call about your bill, there's a whole process where your call is recorded, information is gathered, and they try to work to solve your issue. In the past, we didn't have the staff on hand to address that because we had staff doing other duties. By using the lockbox system, we were able to keep those staff employed but provide a greater level of service to the citizens. It's a standard business practice and process. If anyone here has a credit card, I'm pretty sure you mail your credit card.
I need it. Don't leave. I'm going to get you.
Carol Street, ma'am?
Yeah, I was talking to someone. I'm sorry.
Carol Street, Mike Carey, you want to talk a little bit more about it? Okay, I have someone here from Utility Building that can actually provide a little bit more insight, Mayor, if you give me one moment.
That's fine.
Okay, come on up, ma'am.
You're going to talk about why we're going to Orlando instead of staying here? Okay.
Hello, everybody. My name is Mike Carey Foreman. I'm a homeowner in Riviera as well as the treasury manager here. I'll tell you why we go to Orlando. The city bank is BBNT. BBNT, to help us, the city made a plea, like, hey, we need some help with processing these water bills because we only have a few people and we're getting everybody water bills coming to this one location downstairs. So BBNT in West Palm Beach, the one on Broadway, say, hey, we have a lockbox system. Like most banks, lockboxes are located. Their processing center is in Orlando. So because you're getting, you have to mail it to Orlando because that's where BBNT housed the lockbox. But our bank is actually a local bank. They're, just their lockbox processing center is located in Orlando. Most banks, I come from the bank, like I used to work prior at TD Bank. Lockbox center is located in Orlando. So that is why you're getting, you're mailing your payments to Orlando.
Thank you. Let me just say this. I don't know, I don't know a lot about lockbox or any kind of box, but for the record, I'm going to ask the manager to look at something, it has to be something closer here in the, in the county that we shouldn't have. And I agree with the speaker about going to Orlando. I, I would ask you respectfully to look at some of the cities in the local area and see what they're doing as far as their water bills. And if we can find something more germane, specific to Riviera Beach without going to Orlando, I would, would like to see that. Thank you. We'll say it on the record.
Everybody, we are moving forward, getting a new lockbox center that is more locally.
That's what I'm talking about.
That is 100% true. I'm actually responsible.
Come on, let's give her a hand. She's already getting there. That's what I'm talking about. I'm going to call her ace to ace and I'm going to call her spade to spade. Sometimes I'm going to agree with the city. Sometimes I'm not. And that's the way that it is. And when I'm not, I'm going to tell you why and I'm going to suggest what we can do to improve. We're not perfect. None of us are. But we need to look at how we can do better. Okay, Ms. Mitchell, do you have a question? Ms. Bram, the microphone? Okay, go right ahead. I'm sorry.
Okay, my comment was to Mr. Boday. My name is Deitra Scruggs and I'm a citizen of Riviera Beach. I just, I wanted to let you know that I worked for the county and I know who you are. And I know that you're capable of fixing the issue here. I just wanted you to know that our problem was definitely, is definitely not with you. It's, it's just, it's the trust issue with our city, you know? So that's all I wanted to say. And, and I'm glad that you're here. I really appreciate that you're here.
Thank you. And I would like to add one thing that I didn't say before, and that is the employees. We have met with the employees. We have impressed upon them the importance of what we're doing to make the improvements, their role in it, and the importance for them to communicate. And what I think happened here, I don't know all the details, but it was really a failure to communicate. And that's what we're correcting. We want to communicate from the very lowest person to the very highest person, all the water issues that we have.
And that's all we can expect. And I think we're on the right track. Let me just say this. You're reporting, as far as the testing is done, what was your name again, sir? Boday? You're reporting directly as far as the testing to Mr. Perry and to Mr. Jones.
Correct. To Mr. Perry and Mr. Jones.
I need you to add my name to the, hold on.
All right, sir.
I need you to make sure you add my name. I want to know about the testing when it's done. I need to know the results and I'm, I'm sure that the Chair of the Council. We want to make sure because we are the elected officials. And we are, at the end of the day, the residents are going, will hold us accountable and responsible. I have full confidence in Mr. Perry and Mr. Jones to do what they're doing, but I need to be in that loop.
Yes, sir.
Can you make that happen?
You are now in the loop.
Thank you. All right, we're open back to the public, Ms. Mitchell and Ms. Hubbard.
Good evening, Dorothy Mitchell. I live in Riviera Beach on Avenue H West. In the month of February, I noticed Rotarooter was in one of the sewer holes next door, on the sidewalk between my property and my tenant or my neighbor on the south side of me. Right after that, about 24 hours after that, I began to get this horrible smell coming up into, I have two bathrooms in my home, coming up in the sink area as well as the toilet. It was so bad that I had to close my doors and open up my jollis, jollis window in order for the smell to kind of subside a little bit. I did, upon returning to work, contact Mr. Alan Davis. I told him I observed Rotarooter going down in the pipe. I know I didn't call Rotarooter, so I just assumed that my neighbor on the south of me had a, a problem. He indicated that he would send someone out, which he did. They did come out, I guess, that either that afternoon or the next day, I saw these big trucks. And I don't really know the technical term, but I guess they did a flushing. Well, the smell did subside a little, but it did continue a very horrible smell, almost like a lift station.
So where are we now? Is it, are we doing?
I'm still getting it, even though Mr. Davis did inform me that they would put some sort of, I think he said a deodorizer.
Is this something new that you're experiencing?
This is from February.
From February?
From February. It's not as bad, but the smells are still coming up in my bathroom sink where I have to keep the stopper down so that I don't have to deal with it.
Mr. Perry heard you and he nodded to me that he's going to get right on top of that to see what's going on and fix it and fix it. Ms. Hubbard? You can, you can come. You want to address the audience? And everybody else, we, we would prefer for you to come on the front row and address the people because we don't want to miss you off camera.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, okay, for, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for hosting this town hall meeting. One of the things that I wanted to come back before you and, and, and say is that we're having our special election meeting on May 17th and so many people that I've run into are not sure about it. And I'm hoping that the mayor and the administration will let them know that this is the third election, that we need people to come back out again. And then there's a lot of people. Okay, excuse me. Pardon me. And the reason I found this out is because on canvassing, a lot of people had received absentee ballots before and they were like, you know, I filled that out. I assumed that there was, it was just a duplicate. So they didn't complete it. And when they understood, they went and got them and they completed the ballot. So I want to ask that we make it clear to the public that on May 17th, this is actually a third election and you do have to complete those ballots or you will have to return to the poll. One other thing that I found is that when the community received these stop absentee voter fraud in Riviera Beach, it also led the people to believe that no one could come around and pick up their ballots or take their ballots for them. That's not true at all. These, you know, over the years, and if you know your history, the community has been riddled with different acts of voter intimidation. Special tests were given to people for them to vote. People were, ran away from the polls and scared. All kind of tricks were played on people to keep people from voting. This is just another one of those tricks to make sure that your voice isn't heard and that you don't come out and vote. This is voter intimidation at its best.
Ms. Hubbard, hold on. Let me stop you. Just for the record, can you tell the residents of Riviera Beach, where did this come from? Who sent it? What name is there?
Well, I wasn't going to call any names, but it's from Patriot Games. Patriot Games is a campaign company. They run campaigns for people. They're running my opponent, Mr. Guyton's campaign. So they were hired to put this out. They do nothing for free. They were hired to intimidate the voters of Riviera Beach and put these lies out. Some of the things that it say that's scary for us as a predominantly African-American community on the west side is that warrants have been issued for people to stop them from voting. We don't want to come into any contact with anything that has to do with warrants being issued. So that would keep people afraid from voting by mail or. So that would keep people afraid from voting by mail or some from even going to the polls. We have such a low voter, a low voter turnout. And I think it's shameful that we would stoop to this level just to participate in a, in a campaign.
Hold on, one, just one minute. The chief is here. Mr. Chief, do you have knowledge of any warrants in the city of Riviera Beach? Any, any warrants from our police department for voter fraud in Riviera Beach? Any warrants for arrests from your department? Okay. And I checked that out and the sources that I checked with said that there aren't any arrest warrants for anybody for voter fraud. So that's just something that the chief said is not happening in Riviera Beach. And whatever other agency, there's nothing to substantiate that. So, go ahead. I don't mean to interrupt you, but I just want to be clear.
I'm glad you did. But I wanted to be clear too because we work hard in the city of Riviera Beach and all, in other communities to get people to civically participate, to go out and vote and to, and encourage people to have a voice in their community. And to have someone that would put out some literature and pay to have it mailed to our homes, I think is quite shameful. And please tell your neighbors if they receive this, that this is just a fraudulent piece of mail and there is no truth to this at all. This is to keep them from voting and going to the ballot on May 17th.
Thank you. Let's give Ms. Hubbard a hand. Sharing information, Ms. Anita is coming. And while she's coming, let me just state on the record, for those of you who have absentee ballots, your time is running short. You almost don't have enough time to mail them in unless you hurry up in the next couple of days. Today is May 10th. The election is May 17th. They need to hit the office no later than 5:00 PM on May 17th. So if you don't mail them in the next day or two, your ballot may not count. Because if it gets through the election office past May 17th, they will not count. So regardless of who you're voting for, if you have an absentee ballot, I have always, for the last eight years voluntarily and freely, have offered myself to come pick your ballot up or anyone else's ballot. Make sure you sign your own ballot. Husbands cannot sign for wives. Wives cannot sign for husbands, children, so forth. Please have the ballot signed before I get there. So I'm coming to pick up signed ballots. If you have them, please get them to me or to someone else that will get your ballot to the election office before, and I see you brought five, right? Okay, we'll, we'll get them. You can call that number and I will continue to pick up your ballot if that's your choice, regardless of who you are voting for. But I certainly love to be picking up ballots or voting for. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Anita.
Good evening. I'm here to speak about Ms. Gwen of the city of Riviera Beach Parks and Recreation. I overheard Mr. Jones talking about, you know, employment matters. And I know they're not of the public's concern, but Ms. Gwen has worked very closely with the public for years. I have a 24-year-old daughter who came up through the Parks and Recreation Department, which she said she was five years old. And I also have a 17-year-old son that came up through the football program since he was five years old. So I've known Ms. Gwen for many, many, many years. She has been a constant stapler in those kids' lives. They love her. They, after they see her out somewhere, they're running to her. They, you know, they love to see her. The parents respect her. And, you know, and looking back at, as of what has happened over the past couple of months, Ms. Gwen did not steal $20,000. And the person who did steal $20,000 was allowed to retire with full benefits and was not made to pay that money back. Ms. Gwen did not publicly disrespect a member of the council and was not reprimanded. Where the, he was tried to be reprimanded, but then the council kind of like overturned it. So nothing has happened. I don't know what is going on with Ms. Gwen, but to get to this point that for termination, I don't think she's done anything that past leaders have done and have not been, you know, reprimanded for. I just don't see it. And, you know, being, speaking about leaders being reprimanded, this, this past week, we did have the council meeting where Ms. Jones was suspended. I feel that our attorney should be on that list too, to have be reprimanded. It's nothing personal about Ms. Ryan. I think she's a very nice person, but right is right, as wrong is wrong. She knew about it. She, you know, she didn't say anything. And then it didn't take, and then everyone says, oh, we didn't have a meeting, we didn't have a meeting. But everyone has those council members' email addresses. And it, you know, everybody could have took one person and said, we have a problem. Nobody did that. So I think even the, the finance director, what is his name?
Mr. Sherman.
Mr. Sherman. Mr. Sherman cut that check. He needs to be dealt with also. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Hold on, just a minute. There's a young lady who has called. Ms. Bram, just a minute. You going to be brief?
Yes, I am.
Okay, let me, hold on, hold on. There's Mary Dixon who's been called, who's called about her water bill. And this needs to be answered. How often are there increases in the water bill? And I'm one of those people, I'm, I'm very much opposed to the increases. I'm, I'm advocating the water bill needs to come down and not go up. But her bill goes up monthly even though her water consumption has not increased. That's a, a issue. Mr. Jones, would you get with Mary Dixon? We'll have a number and we need to address that because I agree. Okay, Ms. Bram, and then we're going to get to other people in the audience.
Mr. Bowday, am I correct? I would like to pronounce your name correctly. You made mention about the 40 sites. As a resident and the managers that are here now, Mr. Danny Jones and Mr. Troy Perry, for transparency in this city here, we are entitled to know those 40 sites. Every site in Riviera Beach, whether it's my resident area or any other residence, now we are expecting transparency. So this is what I'm asking from the managerial staff to put out those areas. The residents deserves to know those areas. And it's more than Grimace Park.
Let's get an answer for you, Mr. Jones.
So stop just saying Grimace Park.
Hold on, Ms. Bram, we got an answer for you. Mr. Jones, would you answer that?
I do. I, I want them to come up.
Okay, hold on. We don't get you an answer because I think you raise a good point. We, we want transparency and we want everybody to know what we know. Mr. Troy Perry.
Good afternoon. Troy Perry, Assistant City Manager. Those 40 sites, I don't have the list right off the hand, but we'll make it open to everyone. We'll put it on the internet. We'll put it on the website. That's no problem.
Good point.
But in the meantime, we're also looking at other sites. We're going to go through a complete transformation to go ahead and identify new sites. Remember, these sites are approved by the Health Department, not by, we didn't just come up with these sites. These are Health Department-approved sites. So we'll put that on the internet. We'll make it as transparent as possible so anybody can know where these testing sites, they're out throughout the city. What they try to do is put, make locations throughout the city that represents each zone or each distribution, part of the distribution center citywide. So you'll know those 40 sites. That's no problem.
Okay, as we move, as we move on. Thank you, Ms. Bram. Give Ms. Bram a hand for bringing that to our attention. This is what a town hall is all about. Bring your concerns and we try to, we try to address them as well. Again, the phone number for any call-in, if you have any questions, we're going to try to get to your questions on the phone. Please, we, we have a way of knowing the phone number of the person that calls in? Okay. Ms. Dixon, you have had another concern. We're going to make sure that's addressed. We have your number. She says when she washes dishes and glasses, a film is left on them. This started a while ago before the media, before the media reported the issues. She does not trust quality of water. And what are the latest measures to bring them to correct it? We, we've kind of answered that one. Mr. Jones, Silver Beach, someone mentioned, and then we got some more people that we're going to be dealing with, Silver Beach and US-1. Could you address that? And again, the phone number is 561-845-4093. And don't forget that Friday at 6:30 PM, there will be a tribute in honor of friends, sponsored by X102 Radio, the youth empowerment program, the Office of the Mayor. And you will also know about all the youth programs in addition to youth empowerment that the city is providing. So it's just not entertainment, but it's also educational and informative as well. Mr. Jones?
As it relates to, we had a citizen come up and complain about the decorative lights on US-1 on the east side. The CRA is currently in the process of working to bury the power lines on the east side of US-1. And once that happens, DOT will then come back in and install the decorative lights. As it relates to Silver Beach Road, we had several council people involved. Silver Beach Road has been on the drawing board to be redone by the county probably for the last three or four years. They've had some, the county, they've had some internal issues with getting the road designed. And as an interim process, the road was almost undrivable. So last year, several members of the council, along with the City Manager's Office and Lake Park City Council and Management, went down and met with County Commissioner Taylor to discuss improvements on the road. And shortly thereafter, they put together the mill and resurfacing of Silver Beach Road until the full redesign can take place in late or mid 2017. So the entire road will be redone and redesigned. What you have now is a temporary fix to make the road more drivable. And, and the more permanent road will be, the start of that construction will happen in 2017.
Thank you. Before we go back to the audience for the questions or statements of input, there's a couple of people that I need to, to get to. We have a young man here tonight that, from the Obamacare people, and would you come to the mic and address the audience? And those of you who have questions of the, about Obamacare, you can call him and hopefully he'll give you a name and number. And those of you who are here tonight, there's a table when you leave the room with information about the Obamacare and the other program that you are working with as well. Please.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes.
My, good evening. My name is Mike Rizzo and I work for the Epilepsy Foundation. I'm not here to talk about epilepsy, but I'm sure a lot of you know that epilepsy is a neurological disease that causes seizures. In addition to the work on epilepsy, the Epilepsy Foundation has a grant from the federal government to provide navigation or assistance for citizens, consumers, to sign up for affordable healthcare on the federal marketplace. This is a completely free service. We are not paid or associated with insurance companies. We are completely unbiased. We're not like the guys that are at some of these bodegas that try to sign you up and ask you to pay $20. This is completely free and unbiased service. We also have, our navigators are certified by the federal government and they're also licensed by the state of Florida. And they all have badges. If you go out to our table tonight, as you leave, we have two of our navigators there. They'll be happy to answer any specific questions that you might have. There is also some literature there that you can pick up. We offer these services in English, Creole, Spanish, and Portuguese. Now, the mayor has agreed to allow us to have navigators on the city property during the open enrollment period, which starts in November. However, now, if there are any life-changing experiences in your families, and that's, that's defined as a birth, a death, a change in marital status, a change in income, or a change in zip code, you're allowed to have 60 days to re-sign up for healthcare. So this is a, this is called a special enrollment period that, that's offered by the, the federal government. In addition, we will, we also have locations throughout the county. I, I'm in charge of the navigator for Palm Beach County. And so we're going to post these, the, the locations, the dates, the times on the, on the city website. So you'll be able to have access to that information. As, as, as Mr., as Mayor Masters said, we have an 800 number. I don't know if everybody has a pencil, but I'll give it out. And that's our call center.
Repeat it one more time.
Yes, it's 1-877-553-7453. And that's our call center in Miami. And they can make an appointment for you with one of our healthcare navigators. The, the other way to do it, of course, if you're tech savvy and you like to use the internet, www.efof.org. And that's our website. At the top of the page, on the right-hand side, it says enroll ACA. And you click on that and you can set, you can set an appointment that way. Yes. Yes, it's www.efof.org.
And this is a site for the Obamacare?
Yes. Well, it's the, it's the Epilepsy Foundation site, but you, you click on enroll ACA.
Okay. And it's, and it's free?
Everybody says Obamacare. We like to say the official name, Affordable Care Act ACA, but yes. Yes, sir.
Well, I like to say Obamacare because he cares. That's good for me, works for me. Was there a question on Obamacare? Hold, hold on, let's make sure we get the mic because people are listening and we're live.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And you said this is Obamacare and it's completely free?
No. That's, our service that helps you, assists you to sign up for Obamacare is completely free. Of course, you have to pick an insurance plan and that is whatever the plan you pick. And of course, you've got, if you qualify, you get a subsidy. But that's, you need to really sit with a navigator to determine all of that. But, you know, it's not, we don't offer free, it's not free insurance.
Yeah, I mean, like at certain sites, I mean, certain places where they, you know, you know, help the homeless and stuff like that, you know, they were going around like St. Anne's. I don't know if you ever heard about St. Anne's before in West Palm Beach? And other sites that help out? And, yeah, exactly. For example, St. George's down there in Riviera Beach here. And we had like a representative, representatives, you know, of the Obamacare thing there, healthcare thing. And they were saying it was completely free and they were having these, you know, people sign up. And then these people were being billed.
That's why we're clear, making sure we're clear on that.
I was trying to get an understanding of what was going on.
Right, I understand.
So, thank you very much for clearing me up. You can't read what it says here. But what it says here is trusted healthcare enrollment for all. Because we are completely trustworthy and unbiased. Not, we're not part of any insurance company, like I said. We don't get paid by anybody. It's, and we offer the service, the signup service, not the insurance, of course.
Okay, thank you for coming. I want to make sure we get our, our reports in that we have. Is there anyone here that has any questions for the police department? Is anyone here that has a question or a comment or a statement to the chief? He's here and his assistants are here as well. If you do, you may come to the mic. Okay, Ms. Moore? Come on up for a minute, please. And I have to apologize for keeping you so long. But Natalie Moore is here and she rep, she is the head of the code enforcement. And I'm sure she always has some good information that will help you, keep you from being fined in what we are doing in the code enforcement and, and whatever updates you may have for the residents. They're here in, in person, they're on TV. Speak to them.
Good afternoon. I appreciate this opportunity so that we can give you a bit of update information. The city council is looking into extending the code enforcement amnesty program. And that's for the residents who've been working to get their properties in compliance and we're looking for the expedited way to reduce their fines. we're looking for the expedited way to reduce their fines. So at the upcoming council meeting, this will be one of the items for consideration, and I know that is something that has been successful for a lot of property owners who've been seeking to reduce their fines and liens. So that is upcoming at one of your upcoming meetings, and we'd like to thank the mayor and council for their assistance and support of that.
Thank you. While you're there, is there anyone here that has any questions relating to code enforcement? This is the time. Okay? Young man, I promised you, come on. Thank you, Mrs. Moore. Oh, wait a minute, hold on, I'm sorry.
I think there is one.
We, we promised you. Ms. Bessie Brown? And then Mr. Williams. So, I mean, before we leave.
The site over by the, the Winn-Dixie on Silver Beach and Broadway? It's all grown up, just like a jungle. Who, who can address that? It's been there for months.
What site?
The, the old Winn-Dixie on Broadway and Silver Beach, right? All grown up like a jungle.
Yes, that is under violation, and it has been sent to the contractor. So the contractor, not them, because they were given an opportunity to maintain it themselves, and they didn't. So the city's contractor will maintain it, and that charge will be billed to the property owner. So we are aware of that. We've been working with the residents in the area on that, so that has been cited.
You know, that, but, but it really looks bad coming into the city.
I understand, and that was our concern.
So it's been cited, right?
Yes, it has been. And it's already been sent to the contractor. They should be cutting that soon, because the owners did not do it themselves. That is one of the functions of code enforcement. If the property owners don't maintain vacant properties, not properties where you live, vacant properties, we may issue violations, and if you don't correct it, then on vacant properties, the city can maintain it, and we will be cutting that site for you.
Okay, then, yes, sir. Okay, and then we're going, now we're going to the audience. I know Ms. Blue wants to speak, and certainly we want to hear from her as well, so we're just going to try to go in the order of people as they have come into the room.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Kenneth McNeil.
Good evening, Kenneth.
I'm a homeowner of Riviera Beach. I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Gwen. I just want to say, I don't know what's the real problem, what's going on, but Ms. Gwen has been a pillar to this community. We have to start from parks, city parks and recreation. Our kids have nothing to do. They have a lot of time on their hands. That's why they do a lot of stuff right now. I spoke to Ms. Gwen on a lot of personal level since I've been coaching here in Riviera Beach. If we lose our, one of our pillars of, of the city, of parks and recreation, we're going to lose our kids. Ms. Gwen has ment, I've seen her mentor young ladies, she has mentored me as a man. You know, some of these young ladies can't even go to their own mom sometimes to go talk to their moms or their aunties or their grandmas by anything, but I know a lot of these kids trust Ms. Gwen. I trust her with everything in America. And I just feel like, whatever the situation of what's going on with parks and recreation, we need to help get the situation settled in a real manner of way. But Ms. Gwen has always been here for parks and recreation, to all I know. We have to, we have to solve this situation, man. This is a good woman. If we lose her, we losing a lot. We're going to lose some of the Chilean squad. She probably going to lose my kids, the city probably lose me coaching here, to be honest with you. Because at the end of the day, a lot of our kids, we losing a lot of our coaches with parks and recreation, because it's a lot of professionalism going somewhere else. And I just pray that we can, we can solve this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who want to speak, please take the front row, because we're going to be wrapping up. I know we have speakers on, on the front, just, we had to stay in order, so. Mr. Williams, and then we're going to the front row. It's going to be Mr. Williams, and then Mrs. Blue. And then the others. Okay, while they're coming, again, we want to remind you that Friday at six thirty P M. We're proud to have tribute to, to Prince for all that he's done here in America and around the world, X one oh two point three, our Youth Empowerment Program that you're going to hear a lot about at the concert, and of course, the Office of the Mayor, we're partnering to make, make sure this happens. I'm going to get to the other questions before we, we get going. That's going to be Friday at six thirty in the amphitheater of the courtyard. Okay, Mr. Williams, you are next.
Yes, thank you.
Hold on, please come to the, to the podium. We want speakers to come and, and address the, the audience.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, sir.
Honorable Mayor, I really appreciate you having a desire to see the public comes in at a town hall meeting. First of all, let me say that I am a Lynn Hubbard supporter, so we can get that out of the way, so nobody have to worry about that and figure out where I'm going or where I'm coming from. In our last meeting that we had, there was a letter that was read by Mr. Tommy Walker in regards to Ms. Pardo, who put a letter out regarding to Singer Island. And it was disturbing to me, because I hadn't seen the letter, but I got a chance to read it, and I will not sit here tonight and put myself in you through the letter. But at any time, you can get this letter from a copy that I'll make sure that you have. Ms. Pardo indicated that if a couple of people, which was Bruce Guy and Sylvia Blue, was not elected, that all of her work that she was being done in the last eight years that she'd been on this council would be in vain. At no time did I hear Tanya Davis Johnson, Nas, Bruce, nor Lynn Hubbard, nor any other candidates make any mention that they would not support Singer Island. How can you have a community of people who you represent as a council person, and you separate yourself? That was a racist statement, if ever I heard one. Some people may have missed her racist statement when she made a statement to whether Michael Brown would be selected as a individual that would be hired by that council. She say, here we go again. I find that appalling, because I live here in Riviera Beach, I've been here for the last sixty years. My education, I, I got it through Riviera Beach Schools, was fortunate enough to become a entrepreneur and do different venues, and they were to make it great, like my kids, my grandkids and all. And I found it very disturbing that any person, whether it's on the west side or the east side, that would say something that to divide this community. This is a community of all. Everybody lives in this city. And I'm for sure the people on Singer Island are disturbed to know that they have been following the direction of Don Pardo at this point, for saying what she said and sitting on that council. So I say this to you, as well as I say it to the community above, that please do not play into this propaganda, such as Patriot Gaves, distorting us from coming out and voting, which is, the, they, they are the campaign manager of Bruce Guyton. So we need to understand where all this come from. They're desperate, very desperate, and God will prevail in all of this. Mr. Guyton has decided that he don't want the elected mayor to be elected anymore. He want to appoint a mayor. So what happens when one of our kids, our young kids, go off to college and decide that they want to take political science and come back and run for mayor in the city of Riviera Beach? And they decide, say, no, you can't run. You have to be appointed by the council. That is disturbing to me.
Mr. Williams, I need you to wrap it up.
I will wrap it up. The Honorable Mayor, by saying this, I want everybody, you pe, we have to come out and vote. We have to come out and vote on May seventeenth, because this is crucial to our city, to let, not let one segment of this community to tell us how we are going to run our community. That is disturbing to me. That's very disturbing that you can take one piece of community and we could control the entire city. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Blue, please. Thank you. Let's give Mr. Williams a hand for his comments, as we do all the speakers. We want to give everybody their due day and give them a hand of appreciation for coming and sharing their thoughts. Mrs. Sylvia Blue?
Mr. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to speak. I was at home watching, and there were some things that were said that just weren't true. I won't call myself a truth bearer, but the truth needs to be brought forth. And first of all, let me say that I'm a Bruce Guyton supporter. Not only am I a city employee, and I don't have a fear of my job, I'm a resident and a taxpayer in this community, so I do have a voice. There was a flyer, and Mayor, I respect the office of the mayor. You and I rarely agree, but I do respect the office of the mayor. It is my expressed opinion that you've allowed this to become a political platform, and that's wrong. Now, I will address the flyer that Ms. Hubbard addressed, and it addressed voter fraud. That was not to intimidate anyone, that was not to tell people, don't vote, that was not to tell people not to request an absentee ballot. But what it said was, it is a felony. Voter fraud is a felony. I know what it says, Ms. Hubbard, because I helped to put it together, and Ms. Betsy Brown. Yes, ma'am, I did. The truth needs to come out, because during our polling...
Ms. Brown?
Ms. Brown, you want to talk to me? You want to talk to me? Absolutely, absolutely. The reason I'm saying this is because during our phone polling, a ninety-seven-year-old gentleman who received an absentee ballot, someone came to pick up his ballot and just told him, sign it, and we'll take care of the rest. Another eighty-six-year-old woman said that someone came to pick up her ballot and said, okay, well, we'll just cover up this name. They didn't say that. They covered up a name on the ballot and said shade here. That's voter fraud. Voter fraud is real. But more importantly, more importantly, it is taking advantage of the elderly in this community. You may not want to admit it, I'm looking right in your face, but it is happening in this community. You know it's happening, okay? Whether it's happening in your home or not, you'll never admit it, but it's happening. Voter fraud is happening right here in Riviera Beach. Another speaker made a statement that he was disturbed by something that Ms. Pardo. And Mayor, I don't want to make this political, but they made it political, and I'm here to defend myself. When you, Willis Williams, allow a white man to come into this community, and he doesn't live here, but you allow him to use your dress against a black woman and have me like I'm a puppet, that offends me. As a black man, when do you have the back of a black woman? Listen, you are less than that.
No comments from the audience, please.
You are less than that.
Can everyone have their day?
You are less than that.
No, Mr. Williams?
Everybody has an opinion, everybody can have the facts, or their own facts. No, you got Fane Lowesman's back. Yeah, he puts money in your pocket.
Hold on, hold on, just a minute. We want Ms. Blue to be able to speak from the podium like everybody else. If you have comments...
You're not a man.
If you have...
You're not a man.
Hold on, hold on. If you have comments, you can...
You told him to use your address?
Ms. Blue, please go ahead, proceed. Thank you.
This has been turned into a political forum, Mayor, and it's wrong. It is wrong. Voter fraud is real here in this community, and it is happening every day, every day. It's unfortunate, but it is happening. Mayor, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, young lady, I promised you. Okay, how many, are we, how many are talking on the, the? Okay, hold on, Ms. Brown. Okay, hold on, young man, is that okay? Can she speak? Okay. Try to wrap it up if you can. Oh, hold on, hold on. Okay, Ms. Brown, Ms. Brown, go ahead, go ahead. Ms. Brown, if you're going to talk, just talk, we're on TV. Let me remind you again that on Friday at six thirty P M., we will have a tribute to Prince at the Riviera Beach City Hall at six thirty, sponsored by X one oh two, X point one oh two point whatever, and the Youth Empowerment Program, the Office of the Mayor, and the Derek Mack Band will be here live. Okay, Ms. Brown, you've got a couple minutes to finish.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Mayor...
And then we're moving on.
Mayor Masters, you should make sure that employees of the city respect you when you're having something in the city. Now, and, and you should do something about Ms. Blue and her behavior in this council person, in this council chambers tonight. And the one thing that I wanted to say is that there was fraud, you know, they, they were saying fraud in the whole United States. And we've only, they've only gotten a point, oh, oh percent, not even a one, to a one percent. So, so that letter is just as bad as the stuff that was being, was being done during the presidential elections. And, and, and Ms. Blue...
Please refrain from, from pointing, just address, go ahead.
The only thing, I want to say Ms. Blue, because you let, you had Ms., you let Ms. Blue address Lynn Hubbard, Bessie Brown, and Willis Williams. So, and, but I'm saying Lynn Hubbard, I mean, Ms. Blue needs to be, learn how to be...
No, 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 come on, come on, Mr. Williams, let Ms. Brown speak, and then we go into these young people.
Ms. Blue needs to, to learn how to be transparent, because if Concern Citizens for a Better Riviera Beach Act, the organization that she started or supposed to be in, honey, probably on one-third of those people live in Riviera Beach.
Thank you. Okay, let's go to our young people. All right, come on, we're going to continue to speak. Everyone's had their day, and this was a public forum for everybody to speak as they wish. Mr. Williams, please. Okay, young people, it's your opportunity. Let's give our young people a hand. They'll stay to the end and allow them their day. Go ahead, sir.
Well, I'm starting, my name is Mark Moore. How everybody doing?
Good afternoon, sir. How you doing?
I'm actually just observing and just seeing how y'all operate. And y'all older people always talk about us young folks and how we are, but, I mean, I think everybody just need to look in the mirror. I just wanted to point that out there, because, I mean, y'all can't tell us how the younger generation are, and y'all ain't just set no good example for us, so I just want to put that out there. But anyways, I'm here to talk about Ms. Gwen and everything. On behalf of, I don't really know the detail about what's really going on, but, I mean, I'm twenty-five, she been in my life since I've been five.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, the community kids, everybody know her, I mean, we all love... So, I mean, the community kids, everybody know her. I mean, we all love her like a mother. She actually my godmother now, so, and I come from Atlanta just to speak on her behalf. I mean, so, if there's anything I can do, tell everybody, I mean, if y'all go out bad about the situation, the community's not gonna be very happy. And, I mean, I wish it were the way it's planned 'cause, I mean, I got more people behind Ms. Gwen, more younger generation, just to tell y'all and really reach out to everybody in here. I mean, whoever can do something that, I mean, I'd be in jail right now. I would still be in jail to this day for her. Behind the scenes, y'all can say, "Yeah, twenty-two years," such and such, but y'all ain't really understanding the groundwork she put in for us kids. Besides, all the other stuff, y'all, yeah, twenty-two years, what about off the clock? Come to our house. How you doing? How you doing? Okay, you need anything. Taking us to school, picking us up. All y'all saying is twenty-two years, but what about behind them twenty-two years? So, I mean, if there's anything, though, that comes from me and the younger generation, I mean, I'd just like to say, I mean, y'all have some decency about everything, about Ms. Gwen, 'cause, I mean, the community is behind her, and I'm a younger generation, so I just, let's get that out there.
Thank you for coming and sharing. Give our young man, young people a hand. Thank you so much. Yes, sir.
Uh, real quick, I ain't gonna keep y'all all night.
Take your time.
My name is Vincent Nelson, and to kinda like reiterate on pretty much everything everyone else has said about Ms. Gwen. I mean, we can go on all night, you know, about the good things she's accomplished. But I basically just wanna say, um, in, I don't know, maybe thirteen, fourteen years of doing volunteer work for the Recreation Center, uh, Ms. Gwen is, is truly a pillar of this commu- uh, this community. And basically, if we lose her, I mean, we, we lost Mike, uh, God bless, we lost Tom back, that was my generation, Coach Tom.
Yes.
Uh, Pop Win. I mean, if we lose her, that's the connection with the kids, you know? And not to take anything away from, uh, Mr. Payne or Miss Aladia or whoever, but they're not in tune, you know, with, with the kids. She's touched more kids that's came through this program than anybody I can probably remember. You know what I'm saying? So, it's more hands-on with her. So, I'm just leaving y'all with this. Imagine, if you lose the kids, if they're not over there, you know, doing basketball or sports or, or just talking and chatting with her, maybe while you at work, or, or probably while you sit in this meeting right now, those same kids would be in your house.
All right, another speaker, young man.
How y'all doing? I'm Renard Price, um, talking on Ms. Gwen's behalf. Um, I've been with the city volunteering for eight years. Uh, Ms. Gwen been there. She helped us out. She helped the children out. Um, she makes us wanna come back to volunteer. Uh, you, you get programs that, that treat you any kind of way, but as a person, she steps in every time. If you, she know you're gonna quit or not come back, she hit you up on the phone, talk to you, reassure things, make sure things go smooth. Um, I keep coming back because of Ms. Gwen. Um, my kids love coming back here. We play baseball. We play basketball. Um, I try to help out as much as I can every year for her, and, you know, this year just seems kinda soft. This program, I mean, this city already lost Coach Pitch for this city, and that's a lot of kids that's gone. That they not doing nothing with their time, and they at home, they doing stupid stuff instead of out here practicing with us. Um, my thing is, Ms. Gwen try her best every year to help this program out, and to me, she's getting no help. If you been here long enough, every year, we have less and less kids signing up for these programs. And we lose Ms. Gwen, the one person that was fighting for it, then we won't have kids to come back here and, and play for this city and get better and have somebody to talk to them when they in trouble at times. I seen Ms. Gwen pay for many kids to play these sports when they didn't have their moms or dads to pay for them. They come to the, the gym, they be sitting there. She ask them questions. They wanna play. She just help out. She takes them home, talks to their parents, and signs them up with her own money to have them play. Not a place is gonna be able to do that or will do that for anyone. She does. And I believe that if we lose Ms. Gwen, this city gonna lose a lot. And volunteer work right now is a lot to the program, and it, we need it. We need Ms. Gwen. So, I think everyone should just, you know, whatever is going on, we need to work it out 'cause we want Ms. Gwen. We love Ms. Gwen with all our heart.
Thank you for coming. We wanted to thank our young people for coming, expressing their hearts. That young, one young man came from, what did you say, Atlanta? Thank you for coming and sharing. Certainly, we can see that they've been touched, and they have, uh, Ms. Gwen has had an impact on their lives, and we can't deny that because we've heard the testimonies. And Mr. Danny Jones is here, and he said on the record that, uh, anyone who's worked twenty-two years, they have to look at that. And he's heard your testimonies, and, uh, let me just say, for those of you who think it was political, I had no knowledge of anybody that was gonna be here tonight. No one. We set public forum for everybody I would get to, to come and speak. When this town hall was planned, the situation, uh, as relates to Ms. Gwen, I had not, did not know anything about it. But I'm, I'm glad it's planned. I'm glad it happened because it gave our young people and others an opportunity to come and address the residents and the mayor. So, let's give everyone a hand for coming and sharing. And yes, you're next, and for being so patient.
My name is Lafayette Miller. Um, I'm also here to speak on behalf of Ms. Gwen. I am a former employee of the City of Riviera Beach Parks and Recreation Department. Um, so I work very closely with Ms. Gwen, and I know the work that she puts in. I know the time that she puts in to do her job. We are, they are here for several hours out of their day. On the weekends and nights, anytime that something is going on in the city, they are there, and they have to work. It's not, it, it's not something that they can choose to do. They have to do that. And I see Ms. Gwen put her all into everything that she does, and I know, I've worked here, so I know things that happen, and I know that things that go on, and I know things that people have to deal with. And Ms. Gwen has been through a lot, and she puts up with a lot, and I know that she takes a lot of stuff that she shouldn't have to take. Ms. Gwen has been over this program since I was a child. I remember coming to the summer camp when I was a kid, and she was over the cheerleading. So, Ms. Gwen has done a lot for this city, and I think it would be a total disgrace if they lose somebody else that's very good and somebody who really cares. She goes through a lot. I've seen it firsthand. I've heard it with my own ears. I know. Irregardless of how I feel about things and certain peoples in the city, I feel like Ms. Gwen does a whole lot. She has put herself, her family, she has helped the community with putting her business out to help others, to inspire others. Things that she has gone through with herself and her family that has uplifted the community. I think that we really should take another look at things and start looking at management 'cause there are tons of people who have lots of different situations going on, previous and current situations that are going on in that department that needs to be looked at. I'm not bitter about anything. I am ecstatic about my new position where I work, and I'm happy. And I don't have the problems that I went through personally, myself there, that I know Ms. Gwen goes through. She puts up with a lot. There's a lot that people see and don't say that people should stand up for the workers because sometimes people feel like they don't have a voice to say things. They are taken through a lot. They shouldn't have to deal with the stuff that people deal with being there. And I was there. I worked in administration. I was there every day. I seen things, and I've heard things, and I know things. Ms. Gwen has put her all into this position. She has dealt with a lot, and I don't think that they should do her like that. Honestly, I don't. I feel like you guys just, just honestly, overall, I feel like you should take a look at management. Speak to the employees and see how they feel, and I guarantee you, you will see that it's not Ms. Gwen. Ms. Gwen is not a culprit here. She helps everybody. She looks out for everyone. I was thinking about taking my son to Palm Beach Gardens for basketball. I live in Riviera Beach. I've grown up in Riviera Beach. But I wanna take my money somewhere else because I don't like the way things are done here. There are good things being done for the community, but there are employees that live here, that work here, that deal with a lot that people are not seeing and not saying anything about. Employees need respect, too. Things wouldn't be happening around this community if they didn't have the people that work here that put in their hard-earned ti- time to get things done around here. That's all.
Thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing. Okay, we're gonna wrap up. This young man, and then Mr. Walker is here. Did, and you, okay. The last three speakers. One, two, three. Shatrack, Be Shack, and a Bendigo. I, I can't because it's, I'm, I'm not letting anyone come back the second time. I think Ms. Brown did because Ms. Brown did. Okay, if you keep it short, to the point. Yes. Okay, young man.
Yes, my name's Devonte. My mother, uh, Marie Antonette Pierre. I've been with the Valley of Love for the last five years. The Valley of Love has changed me in more ways than one. And there's not really much I can say except that she helps the homeless. She does what she does. She gets out of her pocket. We, we feed on senior aisle, and we do a big feeding every Sunday. The Valley of Love has been with us for the last five years, and I can say with pride that Marie has changed me big time. She's changed me in more ways than one. I went from being a loner and adrift to, to finding a family that I can actually say I love without question of doubt. There are things about this lady that, and her ministry that she does. If you look in, if you look and you can see, you can ask at least any twenty people that I know, and they can ask them, that the Valley of Love has changed them in more ways than one. I can say with pride that I am a prime example, and through her, and through, she, she preaches every Sunday. She gives me inspiration. She has changed me. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, they need three thousand dollars to keep their doors open, and, and the phone number again, Ms. Marie, is five six one- five zero two.
Eight seven five seven.
Eight seven five seven. That's really the only homeless shelter program and all the other wonderful things that's happening in Riviera Beach that I know of. Come on, young lady.
Good evening. Um, I'm Kiana Hernandez, and I'm speaking on behalf of Ms. Gwen. Uh, one of the first things that I would like to ask is, what are we teaching our kids by saying that we're going to get rid of Ms. Gwen? As a young woman, growing up in Riviera Beach, I needed to see someone like Ms. Gwen always involved in my community. I needed to see her at the doors of Wells and Tates every time I came, saying something positive to me like, "Hey, smart girl," or, "Hey, pretty girl." I needed to hear that. I had it at home, but when we go outside, we still need those things. I now teach in Palm Beach County schools, and I see a lot of kids that feel like we do not care about them. If we let Ms. Gwen go, we are reinforcing that idea that we don't care about them because she is one of the people that actually truly, truly, truly cares about the kids here. Not just for a day, not for politics, not because it looks good, but because it's what's in her heart. Twenty-two years is a long time to be in a position, especially a position that you get a lot of turmoil in, you get a lot of backlash, and it seems like it's never enough. You don't always see the turnover so quick. But year after year, she stayed. Year after year, she's worked. Are we just saying to our kids, "It doesn't matter how much work you put in. It doesn't matter. If I don't like you, if I don't like what you're doing, I'm throwing you away." That's not the message that we wanna present to our kids. I have to work day in and day out to not only teach my students academics, but to take that mindset from them. The students here in Riviera Beach community feel like the community is against them. Feel like they don't care. Even the youth at my church feel like, "Why? Why do I wanna do the things in Riviera Beach County if nobody, Riviera Beach, uh, city, if nobody is caring about me?" Do you wanna take Ms. Gwen away, the person that they see that they know cares about them? That wouldn't be the right thing to do. So, what we need to do is look at the other factors that come into play. It's not Ms. Gwen that's at fault. In fact, what we should be doing is giving Ms. Gwen a pat on the back. This room should be filled with people, and in fact, it would be filled if we had allowed it to be the day that it was supposed to be, at the time that it was supposed to be. But we didn't do that because even though we look like each other, and we say we're all here for each other, we're not. And that's just the truth of the matter because just because they are skinfolk don't mean that they are kinfolk, and everybody knows that. So-
All right.
We gotta do better as a people. If we're gonna be a community and say that we all here for each other, then number one, we need to think about the kids. How are they gonna feel? What message are we sending to them? And then we need to think about Ms. Gwen, who has definitely put in the work. Allow her to enjoy the harvest of her labor. Let her retire when her retirement is due. Don't push her out. Let her stay and continue to do the work before we lose the kids. The gentleman said, "They'll be in your houses. They'll be in, in these streets." That's not what we want. We wanna build up good youth, strong black men, strong black women. That's what we need. So, I encourage everybody to be on Ms. Gwen's side, whether you worried about your job or not. If you have faith, he'll protect you. Uh, Ms. Gwen, I encourage you to keep on going 'cause I'm supporting you, and everybody else is, too.
Hold on, stay there. I wanna ask you two questions. One is, well, not really a question, but any young people that you know from sixteen to twenty-one that maybe have dropped out of high school, they can get, I don't know where you here earlier, but we have a program down in Riviera Beach that they can go to the computer, computerized program and get their actual high school diploma.
All right. I teach high school and GED, so I know all about it.
But if any, well, this is gonna be a new program that's coming, you know about it, in July? So, make sure that we have contact with you, the office, for we, you can help us find some of those young people who have dropped out of school. Now, the other thing you said about Ms. Gwen, I need to ask you this. You say y'all was gonna come to another meeting? Y'all was gonna have a whole lot?
Oh, absolutely. The people were gonna come.
And the mayor, the mayor just messed that up?
I'm not saying that you did.
No, I'm just kidding with you.
But you didn't know.
No.
So, hey.
So, but y'all coming to another meeting?
We coming to whatever meeting it is to support Ms. Gwen. Whether it's today, tomorrow, Thursday, Friday, if it's on a Saturday morning, we'll be-
I just didn't want you to think the mayor messed your plans up 'cause, you know, I didn't know.
I'm just letting you know. We're helping Ms. Gwen.
The city is for the people. Thank you. Um, we're gonna close with two adults. Yes, I wanted to get the information. Yes, sir, young man. Come on, let's give our young man. No, no, you gonna have to speak 'cause you here. And I've already called your name.
How you doing? Daniel Barnett. Um, plain and simple, um, I didn't, would I initially have my notes to speak on? I won't because sitting here, our biggest issue in the city, regardless if it's the water, if it's, um, for one, I'll say what I was gonna say about Ms. Gwen to last, but if it, we need unity, point blank. Whether it's the community coming together and we stay on top of our elected officials, tho- those who getting hired and getting paid. If we were a community and stay on top of our city how we were supposed to, it'd be harder for people to disclose stuff. Same way Ms., um, Brim, she does her research. Everybody talk about Lowesman, but Lowesman does bring the facts. He does his research. Everybody, we getting unity and do your own research, and everybody come up here and be in unity, is, 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 that'd make it hard and illuminate some of the scandals or ways that people are feared. Now, I'm not too sure what's going on with Ms. Gwen's situation, but for me to hear someone just a few years younger than me, and I'm thirty-one, and they saying how much this person done in twenty-two years, those that know of me and know my running around and how I got involved with politics and speaking up in the city, I've been in a firehouse neighborhood for some years now, and I'm talking over seven, and that's just one of the years I've been legit and changed my life. But for me to walk ten minutes to another neighborhood and someone don't know this event coming up and that event coming up, we really need unity, and I'm not gonna drag it out because I have so much, and it's a lot coming up where y'all, you all will see the youth city, whether it's residents, business owners, and the ci- the city as whole, and certain officials and elected employees of the city. We have things going on, networking with fire department, police, career opportunities, and to bring that old-school trait of what it takes to village to raise a child because we used to get whuppings by grandma, neighbors, and everybody else. Nowadays, you can't blame these grandmas, the older generation scared to say something to these kids because they know nothing of a whipping. Their parents letting the kids run. So, some kids I do, I might, hey, such and such, but if I had that old street mentality or either that background, and they know me from the streets, they'll try me when I say something to them about do right because you have these- they'll try me when I say something to them about do right, because you have these youth that's running around freelancing, that will go back and break into houses, will go terrorize and disrespect older person. So if we do say it's awakening, we love our black community and our black queens or whatever, us men mainly, I'm coming at you strictly. I'm coming to visit you at work, or wherever I see you. This man here, Mr. Tomlin Walker, Reverend Masters, I'm just letting it be known. You know, for me to hear this, saying this lady does this, and everybody is unity, I need help. I have a business, and I have to run around and do stuff for my kids, because it's lack at home. But we need units. Like I said, I'm shitting my mouth right now, but I'm going to the media, I'm pulling everybody I know. Same with Ms. Marie. I volunteered sometime over there, and i- it's a lack of unity. If everybody put up a dollar in the city, this lady have well more of a, everybody give me fifty cents, we can have the whole city for us, the youth straight. But I'm not sure of Ms. Gwen's situation, but I, I'm definitely gonna find out. But I'm, I'm not happy with kids, as far as adults coming up here in twenty-two years. Hell, I need help.
Go watch your leg.
I'm sorry, but that's look, but I need help. I got my own trials and tribulations and spiritual warfare I'm going against to take off, but the kids need it. If we the kids of the future, like I say, we got a port, and we own it, that's too much money for me to let, well, whether I'm the j- uh, either the other side.
And Frederick Douglass, stay right, stay right there, 'cause I wanna make a great statement. Thank you for coming, but you mentioned something that no one mentioned tonight, which is the spirit of unity. And Frederick Douglass said, I don't wanna misquote him, where there's unity, there's strength, I believe. And that is a good, positive concept. You keep working, we need more unity, I, I think everyone in this room can agree that we certainly need unity in the community, and we will have the strength to do the kinds of things that we need to be doing and should be doing and will do for our young people, for our seniors, and for the residents of Riviera Beach. Come on, let's give this young man a hand, Daniel Barnett, who talked about unity.
One more second, um, we're, we're doing the event, and we locked in a date today for, uh, June eleventh. Um, the kids will be playing against the, uh, Police Department, but right now, like I say, next coming week, we'll have flyers. It's hashtag examples of unity, and there's just no signing on the line, it's residents, business owners, whoever, we chipping in and do events for the community and to the kids.
Y'all gonna play against the Police Department. Daniel, stay right there.
And same way with Ms. Marie, this example, we wanna get a structure with no strings attached.
Stay in the mic.
And when you can, and when you can give, when people in the city in need, we support our city regardless who it is. But if they paying bills and taxes here, they should be here, especially when it's done for the community at no cost.
Now, the game you gonna, the young people gonna play, the Police Department in basketball?
It, it will be a little different, 'cause originally it started off at George Street Firehouse Park, but instead of having it centered in the park against whatever everybody else's reputation, we'll be moving over to Dan.
I just wanna know who's gonna win.
Oh, it'll be Dan Callaway, but.
Now, who's gonna win?
Myself will be playing with the police officers, and yet it's my own kids.
That's, so that means the police gonna win.
Eighty babies versus two thousand, well, ninety baby, two thousand challenges, so it's a generational thing. The younger generation feel like they can beat us, but the older, I feel like the older generation will win. But that should be the bumping head, okay, sometime, regardless how old you think, older folks got knowledge.
Just coming together, just coming together. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hubbard, I'm gonna give you two minutes, 'cause I wanna wrap it up, and I know you've spoken, but I wanna be fair to everybody. Please stay with us, 'cause we're about ready to go. I guarantee you, five minutes, we're all going.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna thank you for, uh, having this tonight and hosting this town hall meeting, giving us an opportunity to speak and me an opportunity to come back. I wanna applaud the community for their civic participation, for coming out to speaking up for someone, Ms. Gwen, who they think that have done a tremendous amount of service in the community, and they were involved and engaged enough to come out and to stand up and to stand behind us, and I want to applaud everybody for doing that. I do want to, um, say that I did not come to make this a political, uh, stance tonight, and, um, the outburst that Mrs. Blue made about the literature. I know about the history of our community and the things that we have gone through to vote. Voting is a bloodbought right, and it would be a travesty for me to not have said anything about what I know was wrong, and that that was put together as a political piece. It wasn't to save the seniors, it wasn't to stop fraud in the community. It was just a more sophisticated tactic that is known as voter intimidation in twenty sixteen. So I apologize for that, uh, for, for her outburst, because it, um, it was directed at me and a couple of the other people. But I don't want, as a young man said from Atlanta, I don't want the young people to think that that's the way all of the adults behave, because it is not. And again, I will remind the mayor and the city clerk and the administration to continue to remind the citizens of Riviera Beach that we do have an election on May seventeen, and we must come out and be civically engaged. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's give Ms. Hubbard a hand as well. Okay, we're closing with the final speaker, and the mayor will bring the closing comments, and we all will go together in unity.
In unity. I'm not gonna take up too much of your time.
You're the final speaker, so you take your time.
Perception, perception, perception. Perception is everything. We, 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 we've been given an opportunity now to look inside of ourselves. We cannot change the perception of our city until we change the perception of how we see our city. I am here to remind everybody that lives right here in Riviera Beach that I've been from here to Daytona, to Shoegong, Maine, to, to Detroit, to Canada. I spent seven years in Alaska, I've been to the, to the Riverboat Queen in Long Beach. I have never seen anything as beautiful as the beach that we have. And I got into politics, but what I'm really getting into is to change the way we think about this city. We, you can consider it as our land of Canaan, our land of milk and honey. And I am going to be doing the things that I need to be doing. I ran for city council, I didn't get it this time, but I'm putting in my time, it just wasn't my time. We have got to change the way we think about our city. More people are getting involved. But whatever I do, as Pat, I've been here fifty years, me and David grew up on the same street. I've been here over fifty-nine years, I just look like this, so don't worry about that. I remember when I couldn't go across the be- I grew up in an era where I couldn't come across the tracks. We couldn't even go across the bridge, and I think a lot of our younger generation done forgot that. But I'm gonna be here to bring it back. Last but not least, no matter where you see me, no matter what I do, I would never get like that. Those are the things that we, this election, you will never change who I am. I would never display that type of attitude about anything in public. Uh, and, and, and I'm not gonna apologize for, 'cause, I, I mean, she's too, we too old for that. We're showing the wrong thing, and I, I, I ran against Ms. Blue and never had a bad word to say about her in public. And for her to come at me like that, it, it's, I just want all of you to go back to your families and let them know that we gotta change the perception of how we see our city before we can change the perception of how other people see us. Yeah, good, good night, God bless.
Hold on, Mr. Walker, stay there, 'cause we're closing with you. You were in the army, and, um, first of all, just stay right there. We have one question, and, uh, Mr. Perry, make sure you get an opportunity, if you will, to call this lady and address the question, the answer of it. Why was the booster pump removed from Gramercy Park area? Once it was removed, the chlorine level decreased. We have her name and number, and certainly call and let her know what's going on. Mr. Walker, you said that you had been in the military, you had gone from here to there in the fifty years, and, and you, and you've come back, well, you're here, and the Riviera Beach was still one of the best places.
I, I've been in Hawaii, I've been on North Shore, where the waves come down.
I wanna thank everybody for coming, by the way, but I'm just gonna close.
Down there, but we have the best beach, that little area that we don't use, we have the best beach.
So your final statement, stay in the mic, is that we have the best, the best beach ever.
We're gonna change our motto. Instead of, of saying the best waterfront city in which to live, work, and play, we're gonna have to add the word visit.
Okay, now, hold on, I wanna ask you something. We have the best beach, right?
Yes, we do.
Okay, and I think we also have the best mayor. Thank you for coming. Have a good night.
Oh, my gosh.
We just wanted to close with humor.